Okay, I think we're set. Let's, we'll start in one minute if everybody just wants to find their seat. Okay, thank you for being here. We will call the April 19th, 2022 Volusia County Council Meeting to order at, which time do you want to take? Thirty-eight or nine thirty-nine? We will start as we always do with an invocation and then the pledge of allegiance to the flag. And again, I'll say that if you are a member of a faith group who would like to be able to participate in the invocation, just send an email to a simple address, This is Kay Green here, and she will give you all the particulars. You're welcome to participate. So with that, we will start with Pastor Mike Bittner of the First Methodist Church of Deland. Mark, that's what I have written down. It's gonna be one of those days.
Would you bow your heads with me? God, I thank you for this time. I thank you for those that you have gathered, those you have blessed us with to care about the welfare of the people of our county, Lord. I just ask that you would be present here this morning, Lord. Continue to work in and through our hearts and minds, Lord. Lay, lay your agendas on us, Lord. Continue to be with us in our discussion, Lord, and may we represent you in your love for the people of our area, Lord Jesus. Continue to guide and direct us and let your Spirit fall down upon us in this room this morning. Jesus, in your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, Carissa, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Wheeler, here. Ms. Gertman, here. Mr. Johnson. Dr. Lowry.
Here.
Ms. Post.
Here.
Mr. Robbins. Mr. Brower.
Here. So let the record reflect that there is a physical quorum present for the meeting, but I do need a motion from a council member to recognize that council member Post is-
Motion to approve.
Is participating virtually and will be able to vote. Motion by Barb Gertman, second by Fred Lowry. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And Heather, you're, you're on even though we can't see you. Can we hear you?
Can you hear me? I said, "Good morning, all."
Perfect, good.
Thank you.
They got it all worked out. We'll open the meeting with public participation. Paul Richardson. And as I call your name, just come forward. You have three minutes. There is a timer on the screen in front of you and on the large screens above my head. And just tell us where you're from, please, so we can know what area of the county you reside in.
Good morning, Council. My name is Paul Richardson. I'm from Deland. I hope you had a great Easter. I will be praying for Ms. Post to get better so she can join us back here at the county council meetings chamber. I'm rising in support of item number two on the agenda, the budget transfer for the Juvenile Assessment Center for the sheriff's office. And I originally came here to say, hey, a couple of weeks ago, several minutes ago, about this, saying it's a great idea. I don't know if it's great, it will work, but it's still an idea and a solution rather than adding to the problem. Because we see nothing but problems at the federal government. Taking point, recently, we, we've been seeing a case where the FBI created organized finance and oversaw a kidnapping plot on mistaken Governor Whitmire, which severely cuts into the trust of the FBI. Because we can't, we can't have law enforcement doing, doing this kind of stuff. They seem to be out of control and unaccountable to nameless bureaucrats and don't seem to need or want to understand what's going on here at the local level. Whereas, thankfully, our sheriff has proposed a solution to a problem that has been ongoing for several months now, whereas Juvenile's have been causing havoc here in Volusia County. And so he's proposed a solution to get to them and get them help that they so desperately need. Whereas, it could be either mental help or, you know, help in other ways where they can, don't have to turn to a life of crime or think they need a turn to violence. So, again, like I said, I support this initiative because it's proactive and it installs trust within government, whereas people of the federal government just want to cause all kinds of problems. So I hope that you pass this budget for them and support the sheriff in this endeavor because it's, like I said, a way to bring trust and leadership, and that's what we need. Thank you, you have a good day, and hope you have a great rest of the month. Bye.
Thank you. John Nicholson?
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach, I. Couple of things. One, on my drive here this morning, I noticed this memorial on the side of the road. It's got like a four-foot cross made out of four-by-fours with the flowers and things of that nature when somebody passes away and that's gonna whatever. They're getting to be prolific. There's two of them on the way here. At one point, there was one on Main Street, which you all control, sat there for eight, nine months. It falls apart, it dies, it withers, the whole nine yards. One, it does not look good. Secondly, it's, it's public property, and to have somebody confiscate public property for private use, it sets precedent. So I'm asking at some kind of clarification, because at this point, there's one or two, but at some point, we're gonna be a big county and they'll be all over the place. Secondly, I think we need to look at some point on the highest and best use of all of our public properties. We have sixteen hundred acres, I believe, for the landfill. What else could we do with the landfill? I mentioned it three years ago, and when I was taking a tour of it, there's a little pamphlet for animal burial, pet burials. We could put aside an acre for those that need to bury their pets, so there's a place for that. I think it'd be a great place for cross-country running, bicycling, all kinds of tournaments. Because I brought a friend one time to help me with the landfill, and he's like, "Well, where's the landfill?" And I'm like, "You're in the middle of it." He says, "It looks like a park." And our landfill really does. So if we could find other uses for it, I would greatly appreciate it. And then joint use. The city at one point had joint use with the county for Long Street Park. Those schools are not in use eighty percent of the time. To have a building and all that land only used twenty percent of the time seems a waste to me. We need parks. So if we work with them and the cities work with them, the kids will have all the accoutrements that they want for sports. They'll have ball fields, they'll have tennis courts, they'll have pickleball courts, volleyball courts. Paid for jointly with city or county and school board, they get more money for the buck. So if we could jointly use our properties, I think would be advantageous. And lastly, I want to thank you again for the Juvenile Assessment Center. I think it's a great idea. I'm glad, a million and a half is a lot of money, but it's needed. And if we can prevent these kids in the future from going into places where they really shouldn't be, it's all the better for us in the long run. Also, I was talking to somebody with the boats when we were trying to get the boats out of the intercoastal. He came up with a couple of good ideas. There's always staff that have good ideas, so we could mine our staff. If you have a good idea, send it in, because people that are working with us have some great ideas. Thank you. Have a good day.
Keith Chester.
Good morning. My name is Keith Chester, and I live in Deland. I am here today to tell you about the Dutton House Echo Grant. The Dutton House is an eleven thousand square foot mansion that has a one thousand five hundred square foot outbuilding, and it was built around 1910. The house is located on a large commercial lot in downtown Deland. A restoration project began on the mansion around 1997, and from 1997 forward until 2006, the project was awarded grants from the state that totaled nine hundred and forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. In 2006, Echo awarded the project a grant of two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars, and the city of Deland provided a cash match of thirty-five thousand five hundred dollars. So the known total amount of tax dollars expended on the restoration of the Dutton House is one million two hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars. No other grants were received after 2006, and the project was never completed. Fast forward to the Echo Committee meeting of April 14th, 2022, when Mrs. Dagney, referred to as Danny Robertson, appears before the Echo Committee following a letter she had written to Echo Staff requesting a change in scope for the 2006 Echo Grant, and if the request is approved, would allow for the Dutton House to be sold to private investor friends of Mrs. Robertson, and the Dutton House would be turned into a private commercial facility, possibly a BNB, and in turn, the citizens would get A. Basic historic display in the common area downstairs for a period of fifteen years. However, there are problems. Through Mrs. Robertson's own admission, she is the only active board member of the two noted for Dutton House Incorporated, and the original grant required twelve. Florida Statute 617.0803 requires a minimum of three board members, and I should note, if the county staff or the county attorney has not seen previous minutes from a legitimate board meeting where Mrs. Robertson was designated as the chair, there's no way of knowing if she was ever the legitimate chair. So at this point, there is no one who can even legally negotiate with the county pertaining to any matters related to the Dutton House and Echo Grant, and the Dutton House and property cannot even legally be sold. And of course, the big question would be, who would receive the proceeds from the sale of the Dutton House and property? One should ask themselves, why since 2006 has the home and property not been widely marketed on the open market to see if other investors may be interested as opposed to a potentially lone non-legitimate board member selling the property to personal investor friends who stand to profit greatly in a hot real estate market off of a property that is located in a prime location that the taxpayers have already invested one million two hundred and eighteen thousand eight hundred dollars in? In conclusion, I do not think the Echo Advisory Committee is equipped to address the issues that are involved with the Dutton House project, and I do not see how the committee or staff can even legally negotiate with Mrs. Robertson. Please end this charade and direct your legal staff to foreclose on the Dutton House and property, and once it is in the possession of the county widely marketed, and sell it to the highest bidder, who will honor an agreement to restore the home. Please restore the integrity of the Echo program and do what is right once and for all. Please also refer to the provided documents.
Thank you. Thank you. And Chris, I'll give, I'll get these documents to you if you will distribute them to members and staff. Okay, that takes us to item one, the consent agenda. And if I understand this note correctly, Councilwoman Post would like to pull V, X, D, D, F, F, J, and O, all for a vote, or just J and O for a vote?
Negative, Jeff. V Victor, XX Ray, double D, double F were just for discussion.
Okay.
And the only two for a vote are J, Juliet, and O, Oscar.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else have any items they would like to pull?
I'll move approval for the consent agenda minus J and O.
Sir, second? Motion to approve the consent agenda other than J and O by Dr. Lowry. Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye. All right, and then for, let's do the ones for discussion first. Motion carries, I didn't hear Heather vote. Is it, did you, did you vote to approve?
I, sorry.
Okay. Motion carries seven to zero. So we'll start with V for discussion.
Yes, so V Victor is the proportionate fair share agreement with City of Daytona and Ashley Retail for their retail site out at Tamoka Town Center. And I just wanted to again point out, I know we've had quite a bit of development, especially in the Daytona area in and around LPGA and the Tamoka Town Center. Just pointing out that this is, this is our approval to just accept the monies, but that there is, we're accepting the money for, to mitigate the traffic impacts. And if I could just have Tad touch on that again, that certainly this amount of money is not going to mitigate, I don't think, the full traffic impact that, that we'll be seeing in the area.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Tad, Kaysbier County Engineer. This proportionate fair share is an agreement between the City of Daytona Beach, Volusia County, and the developer, Ashley Global Retail for the Ashley Furniture Site in Daytona. It's just south of the Sam's Club over in the Tanger area, south of LPGA, just east of I-95. Based on their traffic impacts, we calculated a proportionate fair share amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars approximately. That does, based on the state's formulas and professional engineering judgment, satisfy the requirements of offsetting the impact created by said development. We will use that money on adjacent development projects. We are putting it into a general fund in Zone One. We don't have a specific project that we are tying it to at this point in time, simply because, just because we reach an agreement doesn't mean we'll be cashing a check anytime soon. As soon as that money comes in, we'll allocate it to potentially Williamson, the widening of that section north of Strickland to Hand, or potentially down there at Bevel South or Dunn Avenue. There's quite a few different projects in that area that we're working on, and we'll apply it to wherever it needs to, to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just, so I just wanted to point out that the, according to the current guidelines and regulations that are in place, we, this is really the best we can do in getting any monies for, to respond and mitigate the traffic impact for the area. So just wanted to point that out. Thank you, Tad.
X?
X. Is my, just checking, is my volume okay? I'm a ways away from my actual computer, so.
Yes, loud and clear.
Good, good. And then X, X-Ray is basically clearing the land near the Daytona Beach Airport. If we could put the photo of the, of the site up there, Megan? It doesn't have a number, maybe it's X four?
It is.
Last page?
X four.
Yeah. Can I?
Actually, can you flip it?
Can see.
Yeah, flip it all the way around. There we go.
So it's really, all I wanted to point out with this is we're, we're clearing that land so that it's pad ready, so that we can work to get someone through economic development to come in and take over that property. But in doing this, I want to ensure, like this should not be a surprise to anyone in the future. We are, we are creating this now, so just really want to point out where this is located and that this is in the works and this is happening. I don't want anybody to come a year from now, two years from now, and say they didn't understand that this was happening. So this is a good thing. It's right actually along the border of the airport. Can you speak to that a little bit, Ms. Cyrus?
I can take it. I've got it. Again, Tad, Kaysbier County Engineer. This property is just south of the runway section there, within the fence line. You can see basically where the, the pond is west with the canals. Most of that area's already been cleared, but what we'll be doing as a part of this is using a grant that we got from the federal government for economic development.
Tad?
Yes, ma'am?
Tad. So I was actually just wanting Cyrus to address the benefit of the economic impact and the benefit of doing this in that area. I just wanted to touch on that real quick. Thank you.
Good morning. Cyrus Callum, Aviation and Economic Development. So the benefit, we are fortunate that we were able to receive the grant from the USEDA. The total grant amount is five million dollars. Our Economic Development Department or Division was able to back that up with a million dollars. And so we want to get this pad ready because we've had a number of inquiries, and I'll speak to that later on today, for the possibility of building aviation-related development on airport property. So the economic development opportunities are going to be vast for the community as a whole and also for the airport, once we get this project moved along the way.
Thank you. I just, that's really all I wanted to do, was just point out the importance of really working to build up that properties, especially right alongside the runway, and that that's been in progress for a long time, and you're actually putting forward what can happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. And D, D?
D, D, I think I can probably just touch on this without Ben or anyone coming up. So that's the Main Street Bridge Machinery Rehabilitation Design. And I know we've had a lot of discussions about Main Street Bridge and the fact that it needs, you know, repairs and lots of different things done to it, but just wanted to point out that Ben's team is really moving forward on the maintenance on these things. And so this is a really good thing, that we are addressing the Main Street Bridge and really working to rehabilitate it, so just wanted to make a point of that.
Did you want to say anything? Ben Barton?
No, that pretty much covers it. We're good.
You agree?
I agree.
Okay. And then?
And then?
FF?
FF, just, I think really needs to be explained, so it's, I'll just leave it open.
Okay. Here we go.
Good morning. Mike, Aller Water Resources Utilities Director. I'm very pleased that sometimes these council items on agenda don't always get, get an opportunity to explain, so I'm happy to do that. In this situation, the West Volusia Water Supply Group, consisting of the county as well as Deland, Deltona, and Orange City, have collaborated for well over ten years in developing strategies, projects, design to come up with ways to address what's the regional concern, of course, as growth continues in West Volusia. Developing water supply plans that have an economic benefit as well as an environmental benefit, make them compliant with DEP as well as St. John's. There's a lot of moving parts in these things. So this particular inter-local agreement, the City of Deland will actually be the lead agency for this on this water supply, and we are participating. We are the water supply, water supplier for the City of DeBury. And so in terms of how much water we pull out of the Blue Spring Basin, we're about twenty percent of the actual groundwater withdrawal. Deland's about thirty, Deltona is around forty, Orange City's around ten. So this agreement is basically based on developing some strategies that are of regional significance that we can all participate in long-term. This initial project list that we're looking to develop, will be, have all of these various components, and we'll be working with the district as well as DEP, you know, considering all of the parameters that exist and, you know, environmental constraints and concerns involving Volusia Blue. So it's, it will be an extensive effort, if you will. We're pleased that we have another local government besides just ourselves taking the lead in this type of role. It's very encouraging, of course. We have been very, taken the lead quite a bit in West Volusia as it pertains to the wastewater, environmental water quality, as you know. So we're happy to have the City of Deland really take the lead with this, and we'll be, we'll be at the table along with Deland and Orange City. So again, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about this. Happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions? Heather, any questions?
Thank you. And so, and really, that's what I wanted to have this discussed for, was just to show that, especially with the future of our water supply, it's very, very important that we're doing these collaborations. And thank you, Mike, for your, your work on the west side there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then for Jay for a vote. Donna, would you like to come and introduce this item before we open it up for discussion? And vote? Or Tim?
Morning. Tim Bailey Parks Recreation and Culture Director.
Good morning. So, oh, sorry, let me get my volume here. Okay. So on this one, this is the approval of the award to the Dixie Septic Tank of Orange City for septic system repair and replacement. And it says, "The agreement will be used countywide with Parks and Rec being the largest user." So I'm looking through, I didn't see any actual locations. It looks like just the contract to just handle what needs to be handled, when it needs to be handled. But I'm not seeing any, my concern was no specific locations. And are there locations where we could actually, where we have access to hook up, but we are still using septic in any parks?
So, yeah, we, we have septic fields throughout the county, especially in rural areas. If water is available and it's, it's the way to go. I've, I've been working with Mike and, and Ben on making sure the systems meet code, but if there's a better way to, to do it and connect to the systems, that would, that's what we would do.
Okay. Is there a way, can, can we get a list of the parks in the county that are still on septic?
Sure.
And, but I'm hearing from you that if, if there is availability to hook up to sewer, that we are, we would move forward with that instead?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you so much. So- So move for approval?
Second.
Motion to approve by post on Consent Item J, second by Lowery. Any other discussion? Dr. Lowery? Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
And motion carries seven to zero for Item J. And that brings us to Item O.
Yes, so Item O is the termination of the amended and restated agreement with Corvell Healthcare Corporation for Network Solutions, Bill Review, and Professional Services. So basically terminating a contract early so that we can facilitate the award from an RFP to another company. So I just had a question with the interim time only due to past experience. Are we paying Corvell any monies for the termination of the agreement? And is my first question. And then the second question is between, in the last few months where the, where it's terminated, is there any monies that were out because we're terminating it? Are we extending any extra monies for the months that we're canceling?
We are not, and actually Corvell will become a subcontractor under our TPA, our third-party administrator, so they will still be handling the Fallujah claims and billings.
Okay, I saw that they would be a subcontractor, but I just really wanted to clarify that we're not, there's no penalty in the agreement for the termination. And then also that there's no, we're not paying like through the end of that contract, which, you know, if it was monthly or, by the way, I also, there's no copy of that contract. And maybe next time, if we could also have a copy of the contract if we're agreeing to terminate or discussing a contract, if we could have a copy of that in the actual agenda item, that would be great. But since I don't have that, I'm asking the question.
No, we're not paying anything extra.
Okay. Thank you. Can someone just make sure to send me a copy of that contract just for review, but move for approval then based on the information given?
Yes, and the response was yes, you will get that, a copy of that contract. So motion to approve by post, is there a second? Second by Wheeler, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero on Item O.
Thank you.
Thank you, and that concludes the consent agenda. And brings us to Item Two. Budget Resolution Transfer to Fallujah Sheriff's Office for the Purchase of Capital Improvements to Establish a Juvenile Assessment Center. And is Ryan doing this, or is?
Aaron Van Cleek, Budget Director. So this is the transfer of the ARPA funds for the JAG Resource Center that was approved at the February council meeting, I believe. So this is just the budget resolution to transfer those funds over to the sheriff so that they can work on that facility.
So this is making it legal. Motion to approve by Gertman, second by, who was that? By Ben? Any further discussion or questions for Ryan or Aaron? This is, this is what's proposed by the council, and this is just legally approving the transfer of money. It's a much anticipated project, so we're glad to see it happen.
Yeah?
Yes.
Or Chair, sorry. Question on, not on the approval itself, but on the agreement. So we're doing, I know that we typically have to have an agreement and then a resolution to, or we're doing the resolution to transfer the monies because they're constitutional, but was there an actual agreement done up by legal for this? Or are we just doing the transfer, the resolution?
This one was done just with a transfer as the council funds the entirety of the sheriff's budget, and this is just an additional piece of that budget.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero for the transfer of $1,593,480. Thank you. And you're holding your, you're holding your ground for Item Three.
Item Three, and good morning, Counsel, Ryan Osowski, Chief Financial Officer. Item Three is for the sub-precipient agreements for premium pay with the clerk of the court, property appraiser, sheriff's office supervisor of elections, and the tax collector. This one is different than the item before. The item before was ARPA revenue loss funds, which are actually general fund dollars because officially we're claiming wages and benefits with ARPA. This, however, is direct ARPA funding and because of grant requirements does require agreements with the constitutional offices. The basis for the agreement was the plan that was approved by council for county employees. So the same criteria for county employees for premium pay is the criteria that is attached to this agreement. And the agreement just includes all the federal clauses that are required.
Second.
Okay, I think I heard a motion to approve by post and second by Lowery. Ben Johnson for discussion. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the agreement?
Aye.
Say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Item Four, Renewal of Agreements for Bulk Fuel with Gentry Oil.
Good morning, Counsel, Robert Gilmore, Fleet Management Director. What I have for you today is a pretty simple agreement here for the purchase of bulk fuel. It is with three vendors, Gentry Oil, Mansfield, and Petroleum Traders. Kind of give you just a, you know, brief overview of the contract. When we put this together, it was a consortium between 10 government agencies that pooled our fuel use together to obtain better pricing. So we took the contract from, it was just county use of about 2 million gallons to over 4 million gallons. So it did leverage that usage to get better pricing. It's broken down into kind of two sections. Full semi-truck loads of fuel and then less than truckloads of fuel. So Mansfield and Petroleum Traders are a predominant provider of fuel to our bulk fuel stations and our, you know, our fuel sites. Gentry Oil is the vendor for less than truckloads, so for our smaller tanks and stuff like that. During this renewal request, the two of the vendors, Petroleum Traders and Mansfield, did ask for a price increase on the markup over their fuel costs. So what this contract is priced, it's based on OPUS low plus a fixed markup. So OPUS is Oil Pricing Information Services. They're a subscription-based company that provides counties and such the wholesale price at the rack for fuel cost. So the contract is based on the lowest price for that day at that, at the Orlando TAF terminal. The company buys the fuel for that price, and then they mark it up to deliver it to us and to distribute it to our fuel sites. So the markup that they requested averaged about 20% increase. Purchasing's help, looking at the CPI increase for transportation cost, that was well below that, what inflation we've seen, you know, for the, through the contract. The ultimate cost to the county for that increase will be about $15,000 annually for the extra transportation cost, basically to get the fuel to the county. If any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Move approval?
Motion to approve by?
Chair, I just had a quick question.
Well, let's get the motion in the second, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Motion to approve by Lowery, who was the second by? By Johnson and Danny Robbins for discussion.
Just real quick, and thank you for, for your presentation there. Do we, when it comes to diesel fuel, do we get red-dyed diesel off-road use? And do we use those at different facilities to save money? Or do we use on-road diesel or tax diesel across the boards even for, even for off-road vehicles?
No, we do purchase off-road fuel. We have a 10,000 gallon tank at the landfill, and that's how we distribute fuel to our off-road equipment, is the off-road fuel. If we ever put dyed or undyed fuel or on-highway fuel in an off-road equipment, there is a process we can apply back for the tax credit for, for the road taxes.
Thank you. I think every, every resident of Fallujah County knows what's happening with fuel prices, diesel or gas. Diesel's worse than gas. And I, it's, it's a much greater than a 20% increase that, that we're experiencing. How long do you anticipate this amount of fuel to last us?
The amount of fuel, what do you mean?
The gallonage that you're buying.
Oh, that's, that's annual usage.
That's annual, wow.
County consumes about 1.8 million gallons of fuel annually for the county government. We do sell some fuel at our fuel sites to other local agencies, and then the cities that are part of this consortium, you know, they're purchasing their own fuel and consuming that.
Okay. All right, thank you. And any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor of the renewal of agreement for bulk fuel? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Brings us to Item Five, Budget Resolution Contract with Wharton Smith for Construction, Management, and General Contracting Services for the much-anticipated medical examiner facility. Tad?
Good morning, Tad Kaysbeer again, County Engineer. This item is the approval of the contract with Wharton Smith to be the construction manager, general contractor on our behalf for the proposed medical examiner facility. This facility is a proposed 20,000-square-foot facility that will replace the current facility just to the south. It will also allow us to pursue accreditation through the National Association of Medical Examiners, which is something that's important for not just retaining our existing medical examiner staff, but in pursuing, recruiting future staff members. It, the proposed building will meet all the Florida Building Code requirements, including the disaster criteria, category-two storms and 134 mile-per-hour wind speeds. The design life for this is 20 years, but we've also built it such that it could be expanded in the future based on any demand increases that may occur. It will also be able to handle mass disasters, which our current facility does not capably do. And the cost for it is about $16 million. This is a little bit higher than what we'd originally anticipated, but based on what inflation has done over the last three years, this is right in line with the national, the national inflation rates. Doctor, come on up.
Sure.
He can explain some of the facility's benefits.
Sure, thank you for having me, Counsel. James Fultcher, Chief Medical Examiner. I don't want to run down the old building, but obviously you know it's dysfunctional. I'm sorry. Make this, all right, motion to approve. All these things will help us, it really will. And I think we're going to get a long lifespan of this building. I mean, COVID was a great example. I didn't have an isolation suite when COVID happened. So I couldn't do those autopsies. I unfortunately was forced to do one recently, and I had to evacuate the building and ask for volunteers to do the autopsy. Shut down for a couple hours to let air out. That's something that won't happen here. If a mass disaster occurs, I'm prepared here, we can bring reefer trucks in, we're ready to go. We have a mass disaster plan now that we had to implement it. I'm not sure the physical plant could handle it, unfortunately, so, thank you.
Thank you. This is one of those things, it's not just a nice to have, it's a, it's an absolute requirement. It's important to law enforcement, it's important to every resident of Fallujah County, and, and the time to do it is now. We've seen when we started, it was a different figure, and it just keeps going up. It's going to go up the longer we wait, so.
Mr. Brower, Ms. Post would like to speak.
Heather Post?
Good morning. I just wanted to thank the Evidence Director for being here, or not Evidence, sorry. Almost the same issue. Medical Examiner Facility Director for being here.
You were demoted.
And just did want to point out, you know, we spent many, many, many months discussing the medical examiner's office. We brought you in, you've done an amazing job of really working to bring us up to par. And I know this is the final leg of that, sorely, sorely needed. And absolutely, we must push this forward, and we must expedite to get it done as soon as possible. So thank you, and we are working to provide you with all the resources and everything that you need to do your job successfully, so thank you.
Thank you, and I certainly appreciate Counsel's support in everything I've done. It's been amazing here.
Thank you. So the motion to approve the $16,87,250. And before I call for the vote, George, I'm going to put you on the spot. Would you, would you just talk briefly about this money? This is not a surprise, and you're going to go look for money now. You've been anticipating this and saving for this for some time.
That's correct. Actually, this building has been anticipated. Unfortunately, one of the delays originally was with our partnership with Seminole County. It did not, the decision was made to separate from them partly over this issue. And so it goes back that many years, we haven't had them for several years. But that being said, we, we saved up for this as we do most of our projects, and then we capped it off with a little bit of the COVID money. So that was able to get us over this hump with the difference. The team also, I can assure the taxpayer, and I want to thank Dr. Fultcher, it was a really great team that was assembled for this, and our architect, and our staff here, Laura Laser and Tad's people. They did a lot of value engineering along the way. So they did what they could do to make sure it was cost-effective, but there are things in there that we have to have, very important. We wanted name accreditation, we want to be able to attract talent in the future, we want to have a great facility for all of our residents. So I believe we have this here, and it's, it's in part because of this team and everybody that came together, so thank you.
Thank you. All in, Ben Johnson for comment, and then Heather Post?
We'll go back on this a little bit. This isn't something, wasn't a new idea. Originally, back before the recession, when we first started planning our Evidence Building, it was supposed to be put on as a wing to the Evidence Building. The recession came along, and we had to take the Evidence Building off of the projects because we needed some work done at the county jail, and we had to put forward the Communications Building, the OC Building, which was affecting more citizens. So it got put aside, and when we were able to put the Evidence Building back on, at that time, the money was low and we weren't able to get to it. But it's been something that's been sorely needed for years and recognized and was planned on. It just took a long time to get to it, and it might be the best now that it did wait this way because I think we've had so many changes that I think maybe now it's, this is going to be a more complete, better building and more to your liking. But it was not something that was forgotten nor not needed, and we're happy to be able, I'm happy to be able to support this.
Heather Post, did I hear you?
You sure did. So I'll just come- So, I'll just comment on that comment and just say, you know, through many months of discussion, I think it was proved where we were at and that it just really needed to be a priority. So, I think that this is, this is a great example of council and county staff looking at these things and saying that, you know, I realize that this is a $16 million project, but you can only go so long before you decide that something is an absolute priority for the citizens and for staff, so that's all I'll say on that. Grateful to move forward.
Thank you. Do we have a 15-year service agreement with you?
You the five-year.
Okay.
But don't worry, I'm not going anywhere, I promise.
All right.
Okay, it's on, it's recorded.
Yeah, you got that for future negotiations, good. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The motion was by Johnson, the second by Lowry. Was that your question, Carissa? Yes. And motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. Thank you. Item six, resolution and budget resolution, local agency program agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation. Ted?
Yes, sir. This is an agreement between the county and the Department of Transportation for the use of local agency program funds, which are federal funds, for our use on the Amelia Avenue project, which will, downtown to land, which will reduce the number of lanes from four down to three and provide for other safety improvements. This is a initial agreement for construction services. We've already been through the design process, which also was funded through LAP funds. We're ready to put the contract out for bid for contractors and this is the first step in that process with DOT is securing the funding for.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Gertman, second by Wheeler. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Wow. What a roll. Item seven, ordinance 2022-13 approving amended and restated inter-local service boundary agreement with the city of New Smyrna Beach. Clay Irvin.
Good morning, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. Before you today is an update to actually one of the first inter-local service boundary agreements that Volusia County entered into. Back in May 2nd of 2013, we approved the ordinance that initiated the existing ISBAs, the acronym we used. These are agreements between local governments where we acknowledge that we will jointly plan for the future growth of a certain area that's tied to a specific municipality. And in this particular situation, it's the city of New Smyrna Beach. And in 2013, the city of New Smyrna Beach reached out to the residents and to Volusia County Council to come up with this agreement so that they could better plan for their future. It generally correlates to their water and sewer service areas. These are areas that would, if someone was to develop their land, they would have to basically connect to their utilities for the New Smyrna Beach Utilities Commission and that would also prompt annexation. Back in 2013, the county council approved it. It was a pretty exhaustive agreement, had a bunch of sub-elements pertaining to everything from roads, water, sewer, planning, permitting, et cetera. Over the time, we've basically refined how these things need to work and the city and the county have come to agreement as to what we need to be doing here with this specific As I said, we are seeing that we've got a little bit of a refinement. And what we've heard primarily from our residents is that the city taking over the enforcement of the county codes was a little bit bumpy. There was not necessarily the smooth transition and there were still some uncertainties as to whether New Smyrna Beach staff was supposed to handle certain things or whether Volusia County staff was supposed to handle some things. So, we're clarifying it by basically bringing everything back to Volusia County. We will handle all the code enforcement, permitting, planning and zoning. We have currently a joint planning agreement with the city, so if anything comes about, obviously, we will be working with their staff to come up with what we believe is the appropriate action on different applications from a future land use map amendment to rezonings, to site plans, et cetera. The other two items pertain to roadways. One of the big things is how does a city take over ownership and maintenance of a local road? And so what we've been able to do is clarify that we have a pavement index of 65, which is a very good number, which means it's a sound road. And once 51% of the lots on that segment of road are in the city, it becomes the city's property. They've agreed to this, we understand it, we'll be going forward with that. Also, one of the other issues that we were facing was solid waste management. New Smyrna Beach was utilizing our transfer station over on 44 rather than going to the actual landfill for their solid waste haulers. They've agreed in this agreement to follow through and go to the landfill directly. That way, we don't overtax our transfer station over there on 44 and allows for the Volusia County residents to have a little bit better access and capacity over there. So, the staffs from the city and the county have reviewed the agreement. We agree with it, the city has already taken action on it, so this is the final action today. Before you, it's the final ordinance. If there's any questions, I know that Ben's available to answer questions about the road transfers or the storm, excuse me, solid waste. I'll be glad to answer any other questions there may be and Paolo, of course, is here to make sure we're all legal.
Motion to approve by Robbins, second by Lowry. You know, if you, if you look at the map of this, it's a complicated thing. There's little pockets all over the city of New Smyrna Beach that are still unincorporated Volusia. I'm just curious on code enforcement, will it require you to hire any more agents?
At this point, we don't believe so. You know, the areas that we're looking at are primarily larger lot areas, so there's not an immense density that's associated with it. At this point, we feel that we can't assume it and not overtax our staff, but obviously we're going to be pushing the edge of the envelope.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of the service agreement? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Did you get the motion in a second? Item eight, budget resolution, appropriation of home investment partnership program funds.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of council. Donna Butler, Community Services Director. So, this is great news. It's a little glitch that we have to fix, but at the same time, it's great news for our affordable housing initiative. Back in January of this year, we brought forward an agenda item to appropriate ship income from the sale of two rental properties. We made a mistake, one of them was home. As you can guess, we might be a little crazy over in community assistance, so honest mistake there, still going to be for affordable housing, which is really great. So, in November of last year, the home loan for Sugar Mill was paid off. $1.4 million comes back to us. Principal of that was $500,000 and the accrued interest was $907,000. So, all of that gets wrapped back in to our affordable housing program. We expected that our income for this year was only going to be $100,000. Now that we have this, we have to appropriate those funds. So, before you is that item. It's going to be allocated in two ways, for the rental development project, $1.2 million, and then program administration, $140,000. So, substantial amendment has to be made to the plan, it's a one-year action plan and a new rental development, excuse me, activities being created. And then we had to do citizen participation requirements and they've all been met.
Motion to approve by Wheeler, second by Gertman. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries seven to zero. Item nine, settlement of Hurricane, oh, sorry for using that word, Brian. Settlement of Hurricane Irma claims with the county's property insurance companies, settlement amount $1,770,496.
Good morning, Arthur Graham, Assistant County Attorney. Thanks for having me this morning. As y'all all know, on September 11th, Hurricane Irma impacted the county, hit several properties, but the most damaged was 250 North Beach Street. It led to the displacement of various county service departments, which had to be relocated throughout the county and there had to be accompanying build-outs at various facilities, including the Holsonback facility. We have been reimbursed a significant amount so far from our insurance companies for building damage, rental expenses, relocation costs, build-outs and professional fees. To date, they have paid over $5.5 million due to the complexity and the timeline forecasted to demolish and re-engineer and reconstruct 250 North Beach through the necessary government, governmental procurement and approval process. All participating parties agreed it was in the best interest to bring this matter to a resolution. A settlement conference was convened with members from each party, each participating property insurance carrier, their assigned risk management firm, Risk, McLaren's, Brown &amp; Brown was helping us, Justin Anselmo is here with us today, and other staff, including legal, finance and risk management on March 11th. And at that point, it was agreed that a global settlement of all future claims against the insurance should be resolved for the figure of $1.7 million that I have there. It's actually $1,770,495.60. It would bring our recovery from the insurance companies to over $7.6 million since the accident
Motion to approve by Johnson, second by Wheeler. Any discussion, questions? Michael Dyer, you wanted?
Yes, sir. I just want to thank, you know, we don't get to have Charles Spencer here very often for good news as a risk manager, but a number of people worked on this, it's been five years. You know, I think Suzanne Conchin was at the mediation, our, Charles Spencer, Ryan, just appreciate all the work they've done on this to bring it to some closure.
For how many years now? Five years. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion to approve by Wheeler, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Ben, you and I are going to have to disagree on something today.
We can find something. It's the day, guys.
That's right. Item 9A, a letter to the governor requesting a veto of Senate bill SB 620 with a hearty amen. Motion to approve that letter by Johnson, second by Lowry. Any of the county attorneys care to weigh in on this?
Sure, just I did mention this at your workshop last week, that we bring something forward for you to consider. The Florida Association of Counties has invited counties to send a letter to the governor. The bill has not yet been presented to the governor for action yet. This letter tries to give some practical examples of problems that could cause local governments and it's asking the governor to veto it accordingly.
And can you sum up the basic thrust of that bill, what it would do to us?
Sure. Paolo, would you like to address that?
Good morning, Paulo Soria, Senior Assistant County Attorney. So, the bill is called the Local Business Protection Act, but it basically says that any ordinance that you enact or any amendment to any ordinance that causes a loss of profit to an existing business that has been here, been in the jurisdiction for at least three years of, and that loss of profit must be at least 15%, the county is liable for damages. Essentially, they use business damages similar to eminent domain proceedings. So, the issue is, is that that's it, that's the statement. So, you know, any action that the county could take, you know, for its good intentions, it's kind of unclear of whether or not that would cause a loss of profit. Anything that you could do could conceivably cause a loss of profit. So, it's kind of one of those very vague bills and fundamentally, it robs every single local government of their home role authority. An example is, that was specifically targeted to the bill, are hours of operation for some of your nuisance establishments. Say if you have a bar that's operating until 5:00 AM or if you have an adult entertainment facility that is operating after hours, if you try to reduce those hours of operation to say protect a neighborhood or to, you know, tap download noise or the business is causing some kind of nuisance, they can claim, oh, you've damaged my profits then, and I can claim business damages. So, it's that type of bill that is targeting essentially the police powers of the local government.
Thank you. The key word for me in everything you just said is vague. It's dangerous to have a vague law when lawsuits are involved and just opening, opening this up to all kinds of litigation. Ben Johnson?
I think this is once again Tallahassee, Alabama step and then to Florida's best interest. You know, this right here can hurt every government in this state and they don't stop and think about the unintended, or they may have the intended consequences, I can see it now. Don't you, that's right, shut me up, turn me off. If you think the government stepped on your toes, contact Morgan &amp; Morgan. This is nothing but bad, once again, Tallahassee stepping into local rule and putting up something that it will absolutely could decimate our taxpayers in this area and the amount of money we might have to pay out. It's wrong, so I think we probably need to fight this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
So, we should use bold print in that letter when we send it, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Aren't you glad that Ben's working on his ability to express himself clearly and?
Sometimes I think the best bill would be give everything west of the Swanee River to Alabama, so they couldn't do us so much damage here.
All right, so we have a motion to approve this well-written letter, which will be available to the public to read. Motion by Johnson, second by Lowry, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
You can tell I'm attending my political career, can't you?
That Swanee River thing wasn't a motion, was it?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Heather Post?
I wanted to comment on this one. Obviously, it's a no-brainer, I think, to vote against it, just for the repercussions, but I think we all know that these same senators have proposed just as equally ridiculous bills and with Ben's discussion there about Tallahassee doing a lot of things against home rule, we're dealing with this over and over and over. So, I think maybe it's incumbent on us to start really looking at the things that we can do locally to help support our businesses, to help really look inward, knowing that we can't battle every single one of these bills that they're proposing. I know that there's, even just the senators that are responsible for this have pushed through a number of others. So, I think it's just very important that perhaps we start looking at things that we can do to maybe combat a little bit of this. If there's discussion on for business owners, what can we be doing for our business owners locally to help them in ways other than going so far as doing stuff like this?
I agree and I hope that will come up in our discussion today with concerning economic development and what's happening there. All right, thank you. That takes us to item That takes us to item 10, sponsorship request from Futures Inc. for their Caribbean party for $1,500. Kevin Captain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. So as you mentioned, this item is a sponsorship request from Futures for their Caribbean party, which will be on May the 20th at 6:00 PM. We have been asked to sponsor this in the past, and it'll be used for programs such as Tomorrow's Leaders, whom you've seen here in chambers in the past, and also Turnaround, a dropout prevention recognition program. They're asking for $1,500.
Motion to approve by Wheeler, second by Lowery. Any discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
The next item, item 11 is another...
Pause one second, please, Kevin. It's for the one he's on now, item 11. Okay, we will have a public comment on this, but go ahead. Item 11, sponsorship request.
Item 11 is another sponsorship request from Our Two Stories for their Schools Out Festival, which will be held on June the 4th from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We have sponsored this event in the past. They are also requesting a $1,500 sponsorship.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Gertman, second by Wheeler. And for public comment, Kelly Marks.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to consider this sponsorship. I know you're all aware of what Backpack Buddies does, Our Two Stories, DBA Backpack Buddies. Just want to let you know that we've served over 10,000 people this year, and we're getting ready to move into the Spring Hill community and take on our fifth school. And we feed the kids for the weekends, if you're not aware of what we do. And we also are feeding many families from our pantry in Orange City. So I just want to say thank you for considering this sponsorship.
Commissioner Kelly Marks, I just want to say thank you for your heart for the community and for initiating Backpack Buddies, because in, what has it been, three years, four years now, you have done so much.
It was grassroots, out of my living room. And now we're into two locations, and we have a partnership with Second Harvest and Farm Share.
That's awesome.
It's bigger.
And it was such at the right time. I mean, right before the pandemic, so you've really been able to make a great impact. So thank you for your heart, your service, and thank all your volunteers.
Thank you for all your support.
Thank you. All in favor of...
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Heather Post.
I'm sorry. I'm trying to talk to staff on chat as well, to let you know my answers. But Kelly, I just wanted to say, to basically copy what Barb has said. You know, you're an official from a city within the county, and it's the things that you're doing and the things that you've done, being boots on the ground and hands-on, and really delving in and looking at the really, really deeply rooted needs in the community that is so direly needed. And I just want to greatly applaud you for your efforts as an elected official in doing that, and really understanding the needs in your community, and really getting in there and looking to see what you can do to fulfill them above and beyond policy. So from my heart, thank you, and certainly from council, I'm sure.
Thank you for your kind words.
All right. Why don't you stay here for the vote?
No, I'm just going to stand right here.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, and I do believe in home role. Thank you all.
Item 12, Kevin Captain, Community Events.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. So item 12 is the Community Events Update. Most of these are reminders. Just want to remind everybody, the St. Johns River Cleanup, which is Saturday, April 23rd, that's coming up, the Saturday. If you're interested, visit volusia.org/cleanup. We also have the Family Fun Day in partnership with the Florida Department of Health in Volusia County. This is a cooperative effort with the county with the Strive to Thrive Partnering for Prosperity Event. The county's Animal Services, Human Services, and Library Services divisions will take part in the event, which will include crafts, giveaways, games, music, and much more. It's April the 25th, and the meeting place is 421 South Keach Street in Daytona. A reminder of the City Nature Challenge. This is to encourage people to download the iNaturalist app and take photos, and this is being encouraged by the county's Environmental Management Division. A new event called Meet the Pack, this is a community outreach event that Volusia County Animal Services is endeavoring. It's an opportunity for residents to get to know our animal services officers and the services that they offer through this division. So the next outing is scheduled for 8:30 to 9:30 Friday, May 6th at Barkley Square Dog Park in Deland, as well as Lighthouse Point Park in Ponce Inland. So look forward to meeting the community there. Also, just a reminder, on Earth Day, it's Friday, April 22nd, we did community information, just met with Votran again yesterday, with continuing to market the very best we can for the free Votran rides on Friday, the 22nd. And also, another reminder that the Hurricane Expo at the Volusia County Fairgrounds will be held Saturday, May 21st. And again, this is in partnership between Volusia County, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and the Volusia Co-Added. That's community organizations active in disaster. And just always like to remind everybody in the public, if you want to learn more about public meetings, visit volusia.org, click on News down to the county calendar, and that'll get you more information. And also, on the next meeting, I will mention, but I'd like to put a tag out there for now, the Sea Turtle Lighting Expo is Friday, May 27th. That's going to be from 1:00 to 7:00 PM. You can learn about the newest sea turtle lighting technologies, speak with county environmental staff, and industry experts to see about the amazing local conservation initiatives that are taking place. Again, that's Friday, May 27th, and that'll be at the Daytona Beach Shores Community Center. With that, that wraps up community events. Any questions?
I don't see any questions.
Thank you.
Would you like a motion to approve? Good. Thank you. Item 14. Here they come. Oh. I've already turned the page. 13 and 14, you'll be here for, but this is for an application for grants, and I'm just going to let you take it over and tell us how much and why.
Fantastic. Good morning, Mr. Chair, County Council, Cyrus Calum, Aviation and Economic Development. So, as you had mentioned, Mr. Chair, item 13 is for the opportunity to apply for a bipartisan infrastructure law, airport infrastructure grant, that is going to be distributed through the Federal Aviation Administration. And so this grant is similar to our entitlements that we get from the Federal Aviation Administration. This is unprecedented with the, what we will affectionately call the Bill Act, where we are able to apply this towards capital improvement programs. And we want to look at $2.9 million in grant funding, of which our match is going to be And that's going to be 5%. The state's also going to contribute 5% towards that, and we look forward to putting that towards our security system upgrade. It's going to be a five-year program, so we'll have an opportunity to apply for the grant next year and subsequent years as well. And then hopefully, with the cost that come out of the security system upgrade, we'll be able to reimburse costs for that with this grant opportunity.
Second, Wheeler.
Motion to approve by Johnson, second by Wheeler. Have any questions for Mr. K?
Hand raised, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Heather Post.
Yes, so I just want to confirm what you're saying, that this in no way delays any kind of upgrade that we're currently working on, waiting on the grant. Is that correct?
So we are moving forward with the security system upgrade. Any delay that we have is going to be a result of our respondent contractors. They're going to need time in addressing some of the things for the bid, but as far as us moving forward with the security program, we are on target.
So no delay in the monies here, in the, no delay while you're trying to recoup monies to replace the funds, correct? This is for replacement of the funds, not waiting on the funds to make it happen, correct?
Right. So we have money to move forward with that. However, this entitlement, we're guaranteed, we're going to receive these dollars. And so we want to apply this towards the security system upgrade.
Gotcha. Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And I didn't, I don't remember if anyone moved approval, but if not, I definitely move approval. If not, I'm just a no.
We have a motion to approve by Johnson, second by Wheeler. Any other questions for Cyrus? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And then item 14. Mr. Calum, go ahead.
Yes, sir. So this next opportunity is similar to the first, however, once again, distributed through the Federal Aviation Administration, bipartisan infrastructure law. This is actually going to be a competitive grant, and similar to discretionary funds that are issued by the Federal Aviation Administration. We want to look towards trying to fund security system upgrades as much as possible, depending on what we get back with our bids. This grant amount in totality is $14 million. Our match is actually going to be 2.5%. And the state's going to contribute 2.5% as well, if we are successful in receiving this grant opportunity. Once again, this is on a five-year schedule. We'll have the opportunity to apply for the grant again, but for whatever we get back with the bids that are unknown right now, whatever resources that we have available, this is, once again, unprecedented times. This is an unprecedented grant program, and we want to make sure that we are competitive. The thing about this particular grant in particular is that they're giving weight to programs that are already at 100% design and are ready to go out to bid, and we are at that point with our security system upgrade. So I am cautiously optimistic that we will be able to get something out of this request.
Motion to approve this application by Johnson, and second by Wheeler. You know what? Yes, Heather Post.
Yeah, so same question on this separate grant, Cyrus. Just really wanting to clarify that we are absolutely moving forward. We are not waiting on the grants to come through to proceed, and that these will be used to replace funds that are used for this priority.
That is correct.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Excellent job, by the way. You guys are, I will, other than Mike Ulrich, I would say, you guys are knocking out of the park with the grants.
Thank you so much. And any opportunity, we know security is foremost for our traveling public, and so any opportunity to upgrade our system, to take something that's already good and make it better, is welcomed and warranted.
Yeah, we all understand this is not guaranteed, but, you know, to leverage $350,000 for $14 million is huge. So while I can say I wish you good luck, it really requires more than that. I almost feel like we should stop and have a word of prayer, but we did that this morning when we opened the meeting, and the prayer was, did that this morning when we opened the meeting, and the prayer was a blessing to what this staff, what your staff and this council attempts to do, and this would be a huge blessing to us. Mr. County Manager, George Rechtinwall.
Sorry. I just wanted to add that this one here may also require some help with the legislation, our legislators. So this is something that we'll be looking with our lobbyists and local legislators. This is a great opportunity where we have a project that we need to do, and there is a grant available. So that doesn't often happen exactly like this, so that's why we're trying to take advantage of that. So we were, this is very similar to what Mike Ulrich encountered, where the council made the commitment to go to advanced water treatment, and we went ahead with the project and continued to win grants as the project went on. And that's what we're looking at here. We're committed to upgrading our security system, as council has been supportive of. The, but here's where maybe a grant meets a project already rolling, and this is the best situation. So this one here will require some help, and we intend to do some lobbying with it as well.
Mr. Rechtinwall, couldn't have said it better myself.
Thank you very much. Did we vote on that? All in favor of applying for this grant, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Item 14, Cyrus Calum.
Looks like I'm going to be here for a while.
Yes.
So it is with great pleasure to present the Airport Master Plan Update to council. So Daytona Beach International Airport has not conducted an airport master plan since 2003, and airport master plans are actually best practices on how to responsibly develop your airport facilities. And so they hone in on terminal capacity improvements and also airfield improvements. And so what I want to do first is give you an overview as to why we do airport master plan updates in the first place, and then I'll get into a couple of our findings that came from our analysis through the report. Now, within your package, you should have the executive summary, which is basically an overview of the findings that our planning consultants were able to put together, and also the actual narrative report is available upon your request. So why do you conduct an airport master plan in the first place? Well, it's a combination of all of these goals. You want to make sure that your physical facilities are in compliance with FAA demand mandates, but also you want to make sure that you develop your facility responsibly as it pertains to what those improvements are going to have on the environment. So airports are mandated through the FAA to follow National Environmental Policy Act provisions, the Policy Act of 1969. So it's been around for a while, and it's well-established. And so they want to ensure that those airport projects that you are proposing don't have an adverse effect on the environment, and extensive environmental review is done to ensure that. Also, ground access requirements as well. We don't want to have airport improvement cause any additional strain on traffic that are surrounding the airport and the adjacent transportation program and planning. So we want to make sure that our plans are in concert with what is going on with our regional transportation network. And then naturally, you can't build everything at once. You have to be responsible with your phasing, and of course, your financial feasibility. And we all know that airports are huge as it pertains to economic viability of a community. So we want to make sure that those provisions are followed throughout the process. So this is a conceptual plan, and because the typical planning period is 20 years, lots of things change. We like to break them down into increments. You have the short term, the intermediate, and long term. Your short-term programs that you have in place, or that you want to have in place within five years. Intermediate's 10 years, and then your long-term plan is 20 years. The FAA, they accept your airport master plan document, but they're really paying attention to and approve the airport layout plan and the airport forecast. The airport... The airport layout plan is in a sense like a site plan, it's not conceptual, it has to be updated and maintained current at all times, so anytime you have some development, let's say for instance, someone wants to build a hangar, after that hangar is constructed, then that must be updated in the airport layout plan. It does not require another airport master plan document be made. The forecast helps justify that development. So, the forecast, they compare the FAA's idea on what the national transportation network will look like, or the airspace system will look like within a particular period, and they want to make sure that the airport sponsor doesn't have bigger eyes than what's actually feasible. But the important thing to get from this slide is understanding that a master plan is conceptual, and depending on what's going on in the economy, what's going on in that local region, of course, air service, flight operations, so forth, that's going to have a major impact on the outcome of what your master plan's going to look like. So, what does the plan involve? A lot of data collecting. You have an inventory, you have a baseline, and then with that forecast, you determine what facilities you need in order to make your airport feasible for its users. This involves a variety of plans and schedules, and this process is open to the public. We want to be as transparent as possible, develop a consensus so we can eliminate public fears with regard to airport development. Naturally, when someone says you're going to do an airport master plan update, people automatically assume you're going to be adding roomways, and that's not always the case. So we want to make sure from day one that the community is involved in what the plans are for the airport long-term. That initiative starts locally, so you as the county council can charge the airport and say, we want to look at how the airport is going to look the next twenty years, and so you can have us do a master plan update, but the FAA does not require it. As I mentioned before, the only thing they require is that your airport layout plan, your site plan is up to date. All right, so with this, the major task that we were involved in, this is in a sense a table of contents of different things that we analyzed throughout the process, and then also on the other side of the slide are some of the dates. So, the notice to proceed actually was initiated on Valentine's Day of two thousand and seventeen, and as you can see, the master planning process takes time, and a lot of things have changed between two thousand and seventeen and now. The elephant in the room, of course, would be the pandemic, which would understandably alter some of the results of the forecast. However, these numbers are adjusted until the final deliverable, which was received in two thousand and twenty-one, accurately affect what the airport's going to look like through the planning period. But some of the major tasks, of course, the forecast and the airport layout plan are two of the most important, but we have a demanded capacity analysis, alternatives, you take your preferred alternative, and you make sure that that is updated on your airport layout plan. And then the environmental review, you don't do the NEPA process at that point, but you'll have a good understanding of what's going to be required after you have your airport layout plan updated, and what level of NEPA process you would need to experience at that point. And of course, the very important public involvement process. We actually had our public information open house at the McGee Room at the terminal, August first, two thousand and nineteen. So, I, I wanted to show you our passenger employments, and, and first off, a passenger employment is a passenger that is paid for a ticket to depart in the airport. So, this doesn't include airline employees that naturally are going to board and, and conduct their business as an airport or as an airline official. This includes passengers from the community that have purchased a ticket and they're going to depart Daytona Beach International Airport. And looking back over the past ten years, or actually twelve years, we had a peak of passenger employments in two thousand and sixteen, that's when JetBlue was in the market, and then you saw our passenger employment start to decrease to the point where we were at the pandemic. So, basically, a passenger employment, if you take into account total passenger numbers, total passenger numbers also take into account deplanements. And the reason why the FAA looks at employments is passengers, when they come to the terminal, they dwell a lot longer than deplaning passengers. They're going to be using your restroom facilities, they're going to be staging in your hold rooms, they're going to be spending time in your ticket counter areas, so when you start to talk about capacity as it relates to terminal development, the employment number is what the FAA considers most important. When people deplane, typically, they're off the airplane, they're over to their ground transportation options, or to baggage claim, and then you're off your facility.
Mr. Brower, Ms. Post would like to speak.
Pardon me?
Ms. Post would like to speak.
Okay, for a second.
Yes, sir.
Heather Post.
No, no, sorry, guys, that was, my hand was raised for the last question, I already spoke.
Okay, thank you. Continue.
All right, thank you. So, I have two graphs here. The, the one to your left shows our total passenger counts, and so that takes into account both employments and deplanements. And you can see the forecast where we started the process, JetBlue left the market, we were at seven hundred and sixty-three thousand total passengers at the facility, and you see what the effect the pandemic had on our facility as we fell off the cliff there. But in two thousand and twenty-one, a very sizable increase in passenger traffic, that shows that we are well and have been well on our way to recovery. The other slide to the right actually takes into account operations, and an operation is an aircraft takeoff or landing at one of our facilities. So, if an airplane is departing a runway, that's an operation. If an airplane is landing on a runway, that's an operation. Our operation numbers are remarkably strong and have been strong due to the fact of our partnership with Embry-Riddle University, with ATP, with Phoenix East Aviation. Flight training continued at strong rates during the pandemic, and so that was one of the catalysts that kept our operation numbers very strong. What you'll see in that executive summary is we finished two thousand and twenty-one with being the fourth busiest airport, and at times, we were the busiest airport in the state of Florida due to our operations. So, lots of activity with regards to what our airport is doing. So, some of the major findings that came out of the master plan report presents some triggers or some benchmarks as to when we need to start considering adding capacity to the airport. And so, we'll go into that employment number again, remember, these are passengers that are purchasing tickets and departing the airport. The findings suggest that once we get to four hundred and three thousand employments, that we should look at adding baggage makeup and airside concession space, but also concurrently, once we get to five hundred and sixty-five thousand employments, then departure lounge is needed. So, that's going to be additional gates, waiting areas that are beyond security, and these things could happen in the event that we get another airline or two, which I, I'm happy to announce that we are working, staff is working very diligent to make sure that that comes to reality soon. When you start talking about adding additional airlines, of course, that's going to put a lot more pressure on the ground transportation network in front of the terminal. So, with that being said, the five hundred and sixty-five thousand number also suggests that once that is hit, that we should plan on increasing our curb side so we can accommodate those passengers that are being dropped off or being picked up. Also, the four hundred and three thousand number relates to the number of rent-a-car facilities that we're going to probably have to start to think about. Parking garage is a trigger at four hundred and fifty thousand employments. So, a lot of moving targets, but it's all going to depend on whether or not we get an airline or two, or how the economy affects our operations. As it pertains to the airfield, very important that we remain current with FAA design standards in order for us to have our operating certificate from the Federal Aviation Administration. A lot of the projects that we have on, on the menu moving forward are going to be related to us maintaining design standards with the FAA. So, graphically, I want to kind of just show, I'm not going to mention all of them, but I want to just show what the planners that conducted the master plan are recommending that we look at. So, of course, airfield modifications to keep up with standards. Because Embry-Riddle, their enrollment is growing leaps and bounds, they are looking at putting additional ramp facilities to accommodate their aircraft for increased flight training. Also, run-up pads for those that are doing their flight training, there's requirements that before an aircraft gets into the air, it has to do an engine run-up for safety purposes. Air consolidated rent-a-car maintenance facility is, is, is another opportunity that the consultants recommended that we look at. But the most important, of course, as I mentioned before, is our site plan, our airport layout plan. And so, for safety purposes, it's recommended that we look at constructing shoulders on runway one six three four, that's our north-south runway, for safety purposes. There's also a future realignment of Bellevue Avenue. This will allow us to create more space on the airport to develop more parking ramps. We are in a situation, what we call, we are ramp-starved, and so what that means is when we have an entity that comes and they want to build on the airport, we don't have a lot of parcels that are shovel-ready, and so we need to start thinking about moving in that process. Parcel sixty-two, which we mentioned earlier, that's an example of why we want to move forward with that project, because we need as much land that is shovel-ready for development as possible, because we have a number of, of entities that do want to do business with the county and build their hangars or their flight support facilities on the airport, and this is prime time to do that. So, moving forward, as I mentioned before, our short-term projects, those projects that are within the first five years, are going to be focused on maintenance and FAA compliance. Because the industry is so dynamic, we have to be dynamic, we have to be flexible. So many things that are going on in the airport industry as it pertains to pilot shortage, I'm sure we've heard that a lot. We're actively trying to recruit airlines, but one of the hurdles that we have in front of us is the fact that, you know, there's no pilots to fly those airplanes that the airlines would normally have in markets such as ours. And because of the fact that we're a leisure market, leisure markets actually suffer at a greater rate than some of those other markets that are focused around business. So, are there any questions with regard to the master plan?
I think we need approval on the report, but is, if you want to make a motion? Motion by Lowry, second by Johnson. We just, we just looked at and approved a project to, to make a, a pretty large section of the airport ready for, for a tenant to come in, which is good, brings in more money, helps the airport to be sustainable, self-sustainable. Are there any concerns with, I know there's, there's more land that we would like to do that to, are there any concerns with that land coming into conflict with where you will need to expand as we get more airlines into the airport?
Not that particular land in particular. Parcel sixty-two, once we get that utility prime-ready graded to develop, we would put out an RFP and see who responds to that, and, you know, that, that's prime real estate, what we like to call beachfront property. But there are some parcels in the southeast of the airport where we have some prospective tenants that are interested in that land, and because of the environmental review and the fact that there's a number of sites on the airport that are brownfield, we have to do some additional environmental review to ensure that that's going to be ready to accommodate those entities. And so, we're trying to be forward-thinking, trying to be proactive with regard to that, but, you know, a lot of airports kind of face this. One of the best assets an airport could have is land, and if you have land, you notice airports like Denver, that, you know, the whole reason they moved away from the city, the city center as far east as they could was because they could take advantage of non-aeronautical land to help subsidize some of the aeronautical costs, because just like us, they have a requirement by the FAA to be as self-sufficient as possible as well. And so, if you have land, then typically you have options. And so, what we're trying to do is give ourselves options in the future so we can be responsible, and we can keep our costs low for the airlines. One thing the airlines always say, and especially as we're trying to recruit them right now, is, well, we want to ensure that we're making money in your market, and we really don't want to pay exorbitant airport fees. Our only obligation, of course, to be self-sufficient is to charge a fair and reasonable rate in order to recover our costs, and so if we can have our costs recovered through non-aeronautical sources, then we can tell the airlines, well, your, your cost to operate here will be minimal, and of course, we need that competitive advantage.
Yeah, that, thank you, that's exactly what I, what I was hoping you would make clear. And to, to me, when I look at it, it helps us to be a little, maybe not a little bit, but a lot more recession-proof as we have these, these tenants, and thank God for Embry-Riddle.
Yeah, thank God, they're an excellent partner, I was just looking at my notes, and I, I think they, they probably are our biggest revenue generator as it pertains to just the operation of the airport, so it's great to have a partner like that, we're very fortunate.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Then all in favor say aye. Any opposed? I'm going to assume Heather voted yes.
Yes, aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. And you're going to take us right into item sixteen?
Well, I figure since I'm up here, I might as well, right?
Might as well.
So, moving on to our budget and service level, the benchmark has been placed extremely high with some of the previous presentations you all have heard, I hope I can do it some justice as I present to you the Department of Aviation and Economic Resources. So here is our organizational chart, of course, the department takes into account Daytona Beach International Airport as well as the Volusia County Economic Development Division. And this summary of operations on paper is one thing, but to me, what I, what I've found in my short tenure here is that we are a collaborative group that have the same objectives in mind, and that is providing exemplary customer service, whether it be to our travelers, the businesses that we work with that are already in the county, and in helping those businesses thrive. And, and I can't say enough about the team that I've inherited, they are thought leaders, and, you know, they continue to motivate me every day to try to think outside of the box, to try to make us even more than what we've already proven to be today, and, and the awards and different things that staff has been able to collect, whether it be individually or as a group, that is a testament to that. So I'll start first with the Division of Economic Development. And our, our primary role, of course, is to facilitate existing business growth, so retention and expansion is primary for us, but also to create new businesses. So we have a variety of startups, small businesses are extremely important to us, and so we want to make sure that we're giving them all the resources that they need. We have a partnership with Team Volusia, contractually, their job is to help us go out and recruit businesses that are new to Volusia County, and so we are thankful for that partnership, they're able to use resources that we're unable to in order to think outside the Volusia County border and bring those businesses into County border and bring those businesses into our community. So what we really want to do, of course, is to create new jobs for the citizens that live in Volusia County, and also increase average annual wages, very important for the quality of life of those that live here. While we do have some wonderful physical assets, the beaches, the forests, the wildlife preserves, we need to find ways in order to be economically resilient, to diversify. And so, bringing in businesses into the community kind of help with that effort, of course, in expanding the county's tax base. You know, if we can spread the wealth out a little bit and have other entities kind of pitch in on supporting us, then, you know, we'll be an even better, if not more thriving community than we already are today. So here's our org chart, led by Helga Van Eckert, who you all are familiar with, and she does a fantastic job working with a very lean division. And we're funded through the general fund, $11.4 million, with 10 full-time equivalent employees as of our fiscal year '21-'22. Our personnel service costs are $969,000. Our operating expenses are $1.2 million. We have $8.2 million for incentives for new businesses. And then we also have, what we had mentioned before, for our U.S. EDA grant, $1 million that are held in reserves. Moving forward into '22-'23, the fiscal year, we plan on reducing two positions for the division, and then also $540,000 is forecast to go into our incentive reserves. The increase in personal services are going to be similar to other departments with the 6% increase in group insurance and wage increases, as well as the Florida retirement system rate change. So I mentioned the 20% reduction in staff. We're able to do this because our team, they are highly skilled at what they do, and they go out and they do what's necessary to help our small businesses. One of the staff positions was actually transferred, actually both were transferred to the airport division, and the airport actually needed assistance from those opportun personnel. And so, this allows the Economic Development Division, once again, to be lean and be proactive in terms of what we need to do to be cognizant of our costs as it relates to the county. So, our operating expenses for fiscal year '22, $669,500, the majority of which come from our Team Volusia contract and also the UCF incubator agreement, both are at $250,000. And then our sponsorships for the chambers and various associations, that amount is Then we have contracted services. We talked about our lobbyists earlier before, that comes out of this budget, also the Aqua Services. The Economic Development Division is required to pay rent to the airport per FAA mandates, and so that rent, as well as the incubator rent, is at the amount of $113,300. Economic Development also assists with our Air Service Development Grant Fund for marketing for air service development, which is a common practice across the industry. So our nearly 85% of our total operating budget come from the aforementioned. The remaining $187,944 comes from software, temp personnel, professional services, and et cetera. Now, I'll have Helga Van Eckert come to speak about the Water Quality Infrastructure Grant modifications, as well as some of the challenges that we foresee for the fiscal year 2023, because she does it so eloquently.
Thank you. And good morning still, I think. I just wanted to mention the Water Quality Infrastructure Grant as an, or use this as an opportunity to talk about the grant that's currently in place, which was used for the Spartan Development Growth, if you recall. Spartan, when they grew, they put the Advanced Waste Water Treatment System in. So the grant was designed to accommodate those kinds of expansions. Because of the success of that grant, it's our desire to expand the ability of other businesses within our community who don't have access to wastewater, the infrastructure, to create similar package plants within their operations to allow for them to grow or go into community sections where we don't have infrastructure now. So we're looking at that grant, we're making modifications to it, and if the council is amenable to that, we would look to come back to you with details on that and how we would move it forward. But first, wanted to make sure that there was a desire for us to spend that time and put the program together.
Well, then pause a second. Council, is there that desire to have them spend the time to?
I was supportive.
I don't think anybody is opposed to it, so I don't believe.
Yeah.
Pardon me? Heather Post?
There was just a long pause, and I was saying I was supportive.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think you need a motion or a second for that, but you're taking our temperature, and the temperature's good.
That's wonderful. Thank you, I appreciate that. So during May, we will more than likely look to come before you with some details of that program, so that we can move that forward. Okay, so then, sorry, which one is it? It's been used so much that the arrows aren't on it any longer. So, when it comes to future challenges for our division, we really see them more as our opportunities. We are working on the Volusia Business Resource Program that you all have so wonderfully supported for us, and we're making great strides on that. We anticipate coming to you over the next 12 months with some new programs. We've had a number of meetings talking about the three primary areas of concern that the businesses have expressed, those being workforce, funding, and access to information and just knowledge on what's available to them. We've created subcommittees on that, and those committees are developing programs that we'll be coming back to you on. And then the other issue that we have is the Small Business Resource Recovery Center, which will also take advantage of the knowledge base and the collective impact of information from VBR, to put a program in place, hopefully using one of the properties that are currently on the airport that we can renovate, to make that facility available. So we'll be coming to you with those costs. We're in the process now of doing an evaluation, whether or not the building can be utilized or whether it would need to be completely razed and a new structure. But we're doing a cost analysis and long-term sustainability analysis. So that's what we see as happening over the next year. Any questions?
Can you go back to page nine? This is an ongoing discussion between you and I and others in the community. Where, you're anticipating another $540,000 for the incentive funding. Where does that come from?
That's the dollar amount that was allocated in the budget from this future budget being put in. In the past, I know that the dollar amounts have been higher, but they're being a little more conservative this year, so the amount's been reduced.
So the same for the $8,217, all those came from the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Before I ask another question, county manager would like to?
Yeah. To be specific, this is your general fund that many councils ago set up the incentive funding, and there's always been an allocation. We're recommending, and this is, again, we are in the budget formulation process right now, and at this point, we're, at one point, we were putting in nearly $2 million a year or a million and a half, now we're down to about $540,000. So this is just an allocation, and definitely something that we'll be talking about during the budget, if there's a need, so, but it is all general fund money.
Thank you for that, making that clear. Barb Gertman?
Thank you, Chair. So Helga, thanks for a lot of the effort and work you've put into the community. The Diversity and Inclusion Program with Main Street, Deland, and Stetson and City of Deland, that program, I think, is coming up.
It's underway.
Is it on Monday?
Yeah.
The 25th, working with downtown merchants. So I think that's a great partnership. I'm also interested, and we can talk more about it, programs for the hub zone and the areas that we're doing the business overlay for, for more of the redevelopment communities. I would love to talk more about how we can target, create programs targeted more directly to that segment, and what can kind of uplift the redevelopment and opportunities in those areas.
Yeah, I think that you're absolutely right. It's a key area, and we had Robin King speak to the larger Volusia Business Resource Group at our last meeting, where we talked about the participation rate of unemployment with our community. And those areas are key areas where the participation rate is lower than what our average is, right? We're at 52% participation now within the county, and one of our goals is going to be to change that, right? We want to increase the participation.
So with you reducing to staff?
Yes.
It makes me, I guess, ask who would be doing that kind of outreach into the community, because I think some of the challenges are expecting people to come to a program versus, you know, going to where those needs are. So will you still be able to meet, or will you be able to meet that expectation to develop programming in those areas?
So one of the most wonderful things about what we're doing right now under Volusia Business Resources is by bringing together all of the partners that have a stake in what we want to do, and better aligning the resources that are available, we're actually, we have a bigger reach today than we did before.
I believe that.
I do. I'm so excited about it, because the partners have really joined with us in, I mean, we all have the same desire. We all want to see the county do well, we all want to increase employment, we all want to help the businesses to succeed. The small businesses want to succeed. So why not align our resources? And that's why, when you look at our budget on the next, dang, these arrows, sorry, is it, this slide here, when you look at the programs we have in place, we do put a large dollar amount to UCF and to Team Volusia, but they do a lot for us. The additional $169,000, the goal is to distribute that among our partners, so that our reach is expanded and the resources are increased that way, as opposed to the staff trying to do everything. Because there's no way, if we bring two more people on, we can't reach the same number that we can reach if we bring in the partners. And they appreciate the fact that we respect them and we want them to be part.
I think that is, that is key. I look at the efforts that are being put into Dillion Springs, bringing resources there and helping the small business along that corridor. And I just think we've got to be more thoughtful about those types of businesses and the needs for redevelopment. So would love to get on the calendar and meet with you in regards to those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to go back to the 8.2, which is going to be $8.7 million in incentive funding. It was already said this morning that, I think by Heather Post, that we need to really be focused on our local businesses and helping them prepare for the future. And I couldn't agree with that more as I look at these incentives. And this is a philosophical difference perhaps that you and I discuss. I am, I'm probably your biggest fan in what you're doing with the incubator and everything in economic development. Not only do you work hard, but you come up with excellent programs that work.
Thank you.
And I would like to see that increase by tapping into this money. I think that if we incentivize local businesses to be more successful, we need better Votran service. We need bus stops that aren't an embarrassment to the county, and we're chipping away at that. But we need a bus stop with a bench and a cover over it, so people can get it. We need sidewalks and tree plantings, and all those things that we do that help our local businesses to attract employees and customers are an incentive to outside businesses to come here. I think we just proved it with the Amazon project. The county staff never came to us and said, "Would you, would you consider an incentive of X amount of dollars to an outside company to build a warehouse?" We didn't need to, because the incentive was the location with two major highways coming. The incentive was the land that was available, the incentive was the zoning that was already in place. And I would, I would just like to see us continue in that vein, and to have Clay's office working with businesses that want to come in, working with the cities, so that we could actually work together and make it easy for a new business to come in. That's a tremendous incentive, because I hear, you probably do too, more often than not, that it's difficult working between counties, cities, and regulations, locations, zoning, to make them feel welcome without giving them taxpayer money, some from businesses that are being taxed, to bring in a new business that might compete with them. Personally, I just don't think it's fair. I don't think it's the best use of the millions of dollars. I might be the only one up here that feels that way. But again, I'm just encouraging you, let's find ways to incentivize our existing businesses, because the same things help to incentivize a new business. We're a great place to live, and it's because of our environment, the atmosphere, our parks, the people on our county staff that are well-equipped to help business work through the red tape of getting here. So I guess you and I will continue to discuss that in productive and friendly ways, but anyway. Ben Johnson?
You wanted some disagreement, we'll get it here. I really believe we have to do the incentives, you know, we are competing against other places, and I agree with a lot of what you said, Mr. Bar, about the fact of a great place to live, because you and I are never going to leave this area because of it. Most of our kids aren't. But the same token, in order to bring in better future employment options for our children and the next group of children, we have to compete. And yeah, can we maybe look at how we help our local people more? I don't disagree with that. But we still have to take and realize, we are competing. We do have a lot going for us right here with the interstates, with the trains, with the airport coming in, but you have other areas that have a lot of those same things. Maybe not the interstates running right together, but we are competing against areas all over the country, and especially in the southeast where there are more people starting to come to. And we've got to continue to be able to stay in that ballgame, so I have to take and I'd say largely, not totally, but largely disagree with your assessment.
Well, I'm glad we could finally arrive at that today, but I wasn't, I don't believe I ever said we shouldn't compete. Everything I said was geared towards competing. Paying a company to come here is not competing, it's saying you don't have any confidence in yourself, unless I give you X millions of dollars to unless I give you X millions of dollars to come here, that, you know, there's no reason to come. I think if there's a company like that, who they won't come here without an economic incentive of giving them taxpayer money, taking it from another business and giving it to a new business, it's basically unfair, and I don't think it helps us. I think it makes us look weak, and like we don't have anything, we don't think we have anything to offer. We do, I want to be competitive, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Using this money to make us more competitive in ways that also helps our local tax base and local companies.
Can I?
Danny Robb, yes, please.
I'm, you know, I think, I think I hate the word incentive, because I think it comes with a stink on it, that people, people don't really understand. Because there's the right way to do something, there's the wrong way to do something, and then there's the better way to do something. And I think what we've arrived at within the county administration is that the incentive programs need to be done so that they're not handing dollars to businesses necessarily, but they're being used in a fashion that allows us to leverage $4 million from the EDA, provide for utilities running along a road that otherwise we couldn't have paid for. Doing the bus stops, because there's a business that wants to be there, but for the fact that their employees can't get to them. So it's a matter of using those dollars to incentivize, or, God, I hate that word, to reinvest. Let's, can we change the word, to reinvestment in our community? To either help train people, provide for the infrastructure, or to do something that's not just going to benefit the one company, but benefit more. Things like investing in the airport, to put a taxiway, is that the right term? Not an airport person, taxiway, or help fund a taxiway, to open up more land so that we've got more airside property. You know, to do the environmental study that we wouldn't otherwise have funds for. And if you look at those dollars in that fashion, you're both in agreement. I mean, we're all in agreement on what we want. It's just a matter of using the money in a smart fashion.
And I agree with that, and that's not what I'm talking about. That is, that's what we voted on this morning, to prepare the land at the airport for somebody else to come. We're using grant money, we could have used incentive money, but we use grant money to make a place that was ready for a business to come in. I just think that's smart. And I think we should do, I think we should do more of that. So, I would just ask, come back and talk to me when you have, we want to give five years of tax abatements to somebody. That's what I don't agree with. Give a tax abatement to every business in the county if you're going to do that. Don't pick, government should not be picking winners and losers. Who pays taxes and who's don't, that's where I depart. Danny Robb, who's?
Mr. Brower, Ms. Post would also like to speak, I do see you have some others as well, but I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, Danny, and then I'll call in Heather.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Helga and Mr. Call, for looking at the big picture in my opinion here. But it takes money to make money sometimes, and mostly all the time. And it comes down to, what are we all getting out of it? And if we can justify it, and we're making it up on the backend, or, you know, in retail or wholesale, you're making up in volume sometimes, something. So, that's the way I kind of look at some of this. Do I agree with all of it? No. But if we take the stance of picking winners or losers, we better be able to justify to some of the other subsidies that we do throughout Volusia County, whether it be affordable housing, government housing, this, that, and the other programs. So, I don't know if lumping it all together is what it all comes down to, what are the people getting out of it, or what's their rate of return? You know, because all this money, it comes back into the community, it does trickle back down, you know, whether, it may not be a good paying job, but you know what? Those people that are coming in are also supplying the baggers at Publix, the register people that are buying food, the restaurants. So, you know, thank you for that, but... That's it, thank you.
Ben, your name's still up, did you?
Yes, and I want to clarify, I'm for performance-based incentives, and that's what they do. And you don't see them just handing the money out, it's if they follow through with this, they get that. And we're taking some of these places that, if we don't do something right now, they're not gaining even any tax money off the ground per se. Agricultural tax, which isn't really helping us that much. Whereas maybe it's not today, but in three or four years. Now all of a sudden they're paying Daytona a million dollars a year, I think that's what Amazon's going to be paying roughly to Daytona. But right now, they're not getting much of it. So that's what we have to look at, is long-range, and realize it's not a giveaway program, and it's infrastructure that other people have to have, and sometimes people don't stop and think about that. Tangier Mall and up that direction, the incentives work. Infrastructure, and look what it's brought in in the meantime. Some good things, so you have to look at long-range and not just say, "I know, I'm going to get a tack," or corporate giveaway. No, it's not corporate giveaway, it's performance-based incentives that is bringing things to this community that we probably would not get. Some things, yes, we would, but it's a bidding war. It is, other places have stuff to offer, and if they didn't offer it, then I'd say we shouldn't. But we have no choices in that matter.
George?
Sorry, just want to reemphasize, you know, Helga, you made a very good point, and really what our history has been, is the money for these projects have gone for public infrastructure. There's been, it has to be a public purpose, and the easiest to identify is for infrastructure. There were state QTI grants at one point as well. That was a performance-based, based on a wage and an amount of employees. There was a match to that, that we contributed on that, but that's gone away. So really what we're left with today would be, you know, in the realm of infrastructure. And I think that's the idea here, I think we're all very close in where our thoughts are, and so we can really, I think, hone that in here, and especially in the budget season. The idea really is exactly like you did this morning. It is, can we provide the infrastructure to make something viable? To make, you know, to be competitive, and be competitive for our existing businesses as well. Same idea. They have issues, when you were talking a little bit a minute ago about the wastewater grant, that was really, came about because we had an existing business that had a need. And, but at the time of putting it together, we were thinking, "Well, let's go ahead and make it something that others could apply for." But that certainly was, basically a retention project to keep somebody here, and it worked, and they consolidated their operations here in Florida, in our plant, rather than up in Indiana. So, I think this is all very good discussion, and we need further, but, you know, we really support the idea of keeping a lot of it, if not all of it, tied into public infrastructure. Again, it's just making sure we have utilities and things where they're supposed to be, so that a business doesn't have an unfair cost to come in, or an unfair cost to expand or keep in business because of a regulation change like we had here. So, all good plans, so.
Do you know if we have an inventory of empty buildings, empty malls, things that could be used, that we could make available and known to businesses that are interested in coming here? Here's a list of locations, and here's the zoning.
Yeah, I believe Team Volusia has a project like that, and certainly we work with them. They're our recruiter, but also we have a lot of that access to that same data to... And that is the kind of discussion that does occur when people come in or they're looking for expansion. We try to point them to those databases and work with them. It's, of course, you've got a very active commercial real estate community that is also very heavily involved in doing that, marketing those items too. So for us, we have to be very careful that we are neutral, and that we provide all the information so that people can make those kind of choices.
So, the discussion obviously will continue to go on, and I believe the way it should be, on a case-by-case basis, and then we can evaluate what's being proposed and what the right thing is to do. You know, the, the state of Florida had an economic incentive program that went directly to a new business. It was an entitlement for a business, and they stopped it. And their report says, I have a copy of the report, says the reason that they discontinued that program is because it didn't break even, it didn't even pay for itself. So the direct tax payments, or tax abatements, or infrastructure just for that new company, never paid for itself. Volkswagen went into Pennsylvania, and they got huge incentives from the state and from the county and the city that they were located in. They didn't stay a year, and they left, and when they left, they left with taxpayer money in their pocket. And that's what the public doesn't like. The public wants new business, they want better paying jobs. And to me, philosophically, I think it's proven that it doesn't work, a direct payment. But when we incentivize the whole county, every business, and make us an easier place to do business with, which is one of the things you're working on. All the things I've already mentioned, I'm not going to belabor it. Then, all ships rise with the tide. And in basic fairness, when you're dealing with other people's money, we have to focus on local business as well, and in ways that make us more attractive to an outside business. So, this will continue as we get new projects coming in. I appreciate what you do, I thank you for your hard work. Danny, did you want to close us out? Thank you both for...
Mr. Chair?
Sorry, Heather Post.
I'm back up Helga, so, thank you. So I just want to be clear that, you know, a lot of good points have been made. Before we were doing, I know Helga, you and I have had lots of discussions on the performance-based monies. I know that there was, I can think of at least two ribbon cuttings that I've attended, just off the top of my head right now, where those companies are no longer in service, and a large amount was given to them to bring in $40,000 a year jobs. And, so I think, I'm, my impression of the Economic Development Division within the county, and with your lead, has been that we are, we are moving away from really looking at quote-unquote incentivizing, and more about what are the really selling Volusia County, and what are the attributes that we have in Volusia County? So why pick us instead of Seminole, other than us just throwing money at them? And I would hope that at some point, they know that they would choose, you know, Volusia County for what Volusia County actually has to offer, in terms of everyone, you know, all the things that everybody else wants to live here for, instead of us just throwing money at them. So, I know we talk about things coming back on a case-by-case basis, but typically when things come back to us, it's really for approval or non-approval of giving the actual incentive that really has always, has already been, let's be honest, sort of guaranteed to the business, right? Because once it gets to that point, there's already been a lot of those discussions. So I'm hoping, what I'm hearing, is the movement by Economic Development Division, and I'd really like you to touch on it, in getting away from a lot of that and more for really just working to build up the base of what Volusia County has to offer in of itself, including infill, and not saying, you know, "We're going to move out into the middle of nowhere, and then, oh, Volusia County is going to be responsible for providing all of the infrastructure to you, and so that we can build up these areas." So, I'd love for you to touch on that, but I'm hoping that you're hearing direction given, and that this is the, this is the way that you're headed?
Yes, it's a lot to address, but yes, absolutely. We're heading in the direction where we're, you know, we're focused more on the existing businesses and helping our smaller businesses to grow, putting programs in place that will actually help them to expand and get them better or more invested in our community, and show that the community is just as invested in them as we'd like them to be in us. Again, any programs, any incentives would come back to the, to all of you to decide what to move forward with. But the direction is that if there are such requests, they really will not be to hand money to any one individual, everything, or one company. Everything is performance-based, and really, an investment in the community as a whole, as opposed to just getting that one company to come in the door. So, yes, is the short answer.
Can you talk to me a little bit about the performance base? So I know in the past, that's been the issue though, it's been, you know, we have, so case in point, the place out by Honey Baked Hams, the tele, I don't know if you'd really call them a telemarketing place, but do you remember them?
Okay, that was before my time, but I do know who you're talking about.
Yeah, so they came in, you know, there was a lot of fumpla, and they said they're going to bring all of these jobs into our county, and that, you know, that never happened, and they no longer exist. So, can you speak to that a little bit about the focus being on, you know, "You're going to bring 100 jobs to this area, so we're going to shower you with everything." I mean, what is the, at some point, we've got to say, "Look, you know, we will create a new business, we will support you when you get here to do business, but we can't, you can't just promise us the world and we cater to you, and then you come in and you're not even, you know, providing what's on our block."
Right, right, so if I remember correctly, the Teledyne Project.
And I don't mean to get out a specific, or to harp on a specific business, for sure. I didn't, I don't want to do that at all, so if you could sort of just, in general.
Closer, okay. So those programs are, they were QTI programs, the Qualified Target Industry Programs, if I remember correctly. And those are already set up so that they are performance-based. So, what happens is, there's a set dollar amount per job that the business is awarded. As Mr. Rector-Mald had mentioned, there's a 20% match that the county is required to put to those jobs. The dollar amount is, was, based on the wages that they were going to be offering and the number of jobs. So, the dollar amount per job varied based on those two criteria. But while the county had to allocate the full 20% that was sitting on the side, from a budgetary standpoint, no dollars were actually distributed to those companies until those jobs were created. And when the jobs are created, it's not a lump sum, like in year one, "We created 50 jobs, okay, here's $1,000 per job, so here's $50,000." What they did was, those dollars are divided up over a period of four years. So from the year that that job was created, they had to be employed for a 12-month period, or a year. They had to provide proof to the state that they had employed these people. So there was a retaining of the employee over the course of four years. That's why we're still paying on some of these programs, because, let's say they were hiring 100 people over a period of five years, well, that four-year period for payout started, in some cases, on the fifth year when that last employee was hired, that's when the payout began. So that's why those programs extend out so long. But since we've committed to those dollar amounts, when the program is approved, that's the dollar amount that the county sees as what's been allocated to the company. the dollar amount that the county sees as what's been allocated to the company. If they don't pay it, they don't get, or if they don't employ, they don't get that money. So you'll see in the budget adjustment, sometimes the money that have been allocated for QTI, if the company hasn't met their criteria or if they've closed, those dollars actually get reabsorbed into the general fund.
Right, so we're not out anything if they go out of business. And the other part to remember is that program, everything we're had, that we're talking about right now is from in the past where that job still exists. There is no new QTI that the state did do away with that program. So all we're into now is the monitoring of whatever is left out there.
The remaining ones, yeah. But in the meantime, you have to remember, those are people who have now been employed for four years, have been trained for four years, have moved up the ranks and have learned skills along the way. So we still, while the program is done, those, your residents have still reaped those benefits.
Heather, were you finished?
Uh, yes.
Barbara Gertman?
Yeah, I, I think it's important for us to remember that there were different programs and there were different needs. As Chair mentioned, it's on a case by case basis, it's based on programs that were established. And remember, we were in a down market, right, for a very long time where you couldn't get a builder to build and you couldn't get a business to come. And there were many things that impacted Volusia, you know, over the last five to 10 years. So, but I think we are in a different place today. We get to evaluate things and, and move forward. And I, and I do agree that it is about identifying good partners and who wants to be part of Volusia County in the right way and negotiate the right benefit for both sides, for all sides, and not just coming to take advantage. And I think we can, we can weed out the difference at, at this time because we're not who we were. And I think, again, everything ebbs and flows and fortunately things are flowing and we can have better consideration for how we go forward and who, what partners we're accepting because we're not, we're not begging for people to come, right? We have choices and we have the resources that if we need them. And again, defining the programs and the expectation of what they're going to be expected to bring to us and to participate with us and to be part of Volusia County. So that's how I see where we stand today. And I, I do love the idea of investing in our small business and, and in those who have already invested in us and helping to maintain and help them uplift. But for where we're saying we want to go to attract high paying jobs, we're going to have to have something in our toolbox, you know, to show what kind of partner we could be with them as well. So, thank you.
Okay. I, I don't want to belabor this, so well, let's, let's wrap it up, but I, I got to tell you, Helga, that, that is one of my least favorite programs. If I'm a business in Volusia County, I, I might be angry now because I, I've got signs out and the guy that has 22 businesses on Beach Street trying to get employees. And no, they're not $60,000 a year, but it's still his business and it's still employment and he's not getting any help with employment and we're picking somebody else to give incentives to, to hire people. I mean, fair, it's fair. Again, if we take that money and we invest it in the community like we're doing in, in other ways to make us a destination for businesses to come, they will come. If we have safety, if we have, actually have clean water to drink, if we can catch a fish out of the Indian River Lagoon and, and fillet it and eat it and not get sick and this fish doesn't have scabs all over it, that attracts new businesses and it attack, it will attract employees. We need to be a destination because we're better than other places to live, not because we give the most money for somebody to come. That it's, you know, I'm beating a dead horse.
And the horse is dead just now.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm glad that every, I'm glad that everybody listening in could, could hear that, so. Go ahead, yes, please finish.
No, that, that was all. I just, I'm not in disagreement with you. I don't believe in spending our money foolishly. I, I believe that the projects need to come before council and they need to be well thought out.
Okay. Thank you. Do we, do we have a motion to approve her, this report? Are you done?
No, no, sir. I have another division.
Well, then let's not have a motion yet.
Yeah, I have another division to speak of.
I thought we were doing, chopping these up. Go ahead.
Okay. We'll send some up here. We figured. So next I want to get into the discussion about the Airport Division. And this is our org chart. We are led by Ms. Karen Feaster and she is the Airport Division Director. Our Marketing and Customer Service Section, that's Joanne Magley. She's not with us today, neither is Dan Blake, who is our Airport Operations Section Division Leader. And then here I have with us our Administrations and Properties Leader, Mihai Smigelski is in the back. I guess they're shy today. And then also Eric Truitt, who is in the back as well with Greg Winquist, who handles some of our properties and administration functions as well. So our mission is to ensure Daytona Beach International Airport provides and promotes safe, secure, efficient, convenient and economically self-sustaining air transportation facilities responsive to airline and community needs while supporting and promoting the area's economic growth and development. Normally I don't like to read things line for line, but that mission is exactly what we are and what we strive to be. And I think why we've been doing that, we are well on our way to improving upon that mission as well. So I would be remiss if I didn't talk about some of the accomplishments that we've made over the recent months, if not years. So talk about beating a, a horse. I want to talk once again about us being the reigning Florida Department of Transportation Commercial Service Airport of the Year. This is very important because we compete with many a big elephant in the commercial aviation industry here in Florida. And so just the team's ingenuity and how they were able to be recognized for this accomplishment throughout the pandemic and some of the projects that we were still able to juggle while trying to maintain and balance our, our economics. This is a tremendous award. I will tell you, I've been with two other airports in the state of Florida and they don't have that to claim. Five staff members are accredited airport executives. This is the most recognizable and highest designation and I am particularly proud of that because I currently serve as the Chair of the Board of Examiners for the American Association of Airport Executives and I oversee this accredited airport executive program nationwide. And so with us having five AAEs on staff, that shows that our staff is dedicated towards best business practices in running airports. There's less than 500 nationwide. My goal was to get to that 500 number and having five of the staff members here that have that achievement is a testament to the team that we built. I mentioned before, operationally, finishing the 2021 year, Daytona Beach International was the fourth busiest airport in the state and the 28th busiest airport in the country as it pertains to takeoffs and landings or operations. 292,000 operations is the number and it's a tremendous accomplishment with, with the standpoint of our partnership that we have with Embry-Riddle and ATP and Phoenix East Aviation that help keep our airport as busy as possible, but as safe as it possibly can as well. Total passengers for the calendar year 2021 was 573,000 passengers and that means that we're well on our way to recovery. As we spoke with the master plan project, where we were as a result of the pandemic, we have left that behind. So the airport is an enterprise fund and that means we do not earn or collect property tax dollars. We are self-sufficient, self-sustaining and the Federal Aviation Administration strongly recommends that all commercial service airports are self-sustaining and we have achieved that. We were able to collect over $21 million in revenues from a variety of sources, beginning with our airline revenue. Airline revenues come from ticket counter rental, gates, hold rooms, baggage claim carousels, just the relationship that you have with the airlines. But airside tenant revenue, that's going to come from the revenue that we get from the land leases from our fixed space operators like Yelvington, Shell Air. Also those entities that have corporate hangers on the field like Brown and Brown and NASCAR. That gives us land leases for airside revenues. Also Embry-Riddle pays a fair amount of airside land leases as well. Landside deals with the areas on the airport that are outside the terminal, but like rent-a-car services, rent-a-car, quick turnaround. Also there's a component with landside revenues that come from Embry-Riddle and some from NASCAR as well. Commercial tenant revenue deals with the fact that we have four hotels on property and, and two restaurants on property as well and a bank. These are from commercial properties that happen to be on airport property, but are huge non-aeronautical sources of revenue. And as I mentioned before, we talk about land being a resource. These are some of those opportunities why it's so important to have land around the airport because you can generate other non-aeronautical sources of revenue that help bring down how much it costs for the airlines to operate on your facility. And then of course you have special events, we have the races, we have a variety of other revenue opportunities that happen throughout the year that we get to take advantage of by people using our parking lots or various pieces of land. So lots of opportunities there. The passenger facility charge, this is a federal program, most commercial service airports take advantage of. The airlines actually collect the $4.50 charge and then they remit it back to us and we're able to use that money towards capital improvement projects that are approved by the Federal Aviation Administration. Similar to that is the consolidated or customer facility charge. That is typically imposed on rent-a-cars that are rented per day. It's a $2.50 charge for each rent-a-car agreement per day. And so that helps us fund some ground transportation and rent-a-car related facilities as well. And I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about how fortunate we are about the grant funding opportunities with Carissa, with ARPA, with CARES and now the bill funding opportunities that we have. That's been very advantageous for us to be able to move forward with some of the projects that we've had listed on our master plan and helps kind of open our eyes to think outside the box for some other things that we can do to build upon our facility. So in looking at our budget, as I mentioned before, our funding source is from the airport. We are self-sustaining. $56.6 million was from the 2021, 2022 budget. Of that, we have 46 full-time equivalent employees. The cost for personnel services were $3.6 million. Our operating expenses are $8.5 million. Our capital outlay, $566,000. Our capital improvements that we, that took place during this budget period were $1.5 million. We have $971,000 for debt service from our terminal renovation, which I hope you all have been able to come to the facility and see at this point. And then, and speaking of our passenger facility charges and customer facility charges, $7.3 million are related to that. So coming up for 22, 23, just like other departments, the, the projected wage increases, the 6% increase from group insurance and also the Florida retirement system, wait, rate changes are included with that. I'll talk a little bit more detail about our capital improvements and our capital outlay in the next couple of slides here. So our operating expenses, our other professional services include our agreement that we have with the Sheriff's Department to take care of our law enforcement responsibilities. We're mandated by the Transportation Security Agency or Administration to have law enforcement services as most commercial service airports are. You've heard me speak about our relationship that we have with our air service consultant, which in my opinion is a phenomenal agreement that we have and, and they have been proving some good results with Volair. We have some potential wins on the horizon. We just got to make sure that they come to fruition, but hopefully we'll be able to talk about new air service opportunities here shortly. Our professional consulting, these are our planners and engineers that help us maintain our standards as it, as it pertains to FAA requirements. And then maintenance of buildings and grounds, because we have to maintain that standard, we have to have specialized employees on the airfield to help maintain our compliance. That's $1.2 million worth with regard to that. Contracted services, we are an international airport, US Customs is on the field, there's a cost to that, but as a valuable service to be able to clear international passengers. And then also it makes us viable and competitive towards attracting international air service. And then of course, building systems, late maintenance, we have a variety of bodies of water and property that we have to maintain. Utilities are $850,000. Temp personnel costs are $733,000 and of course property insurance.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Post would like to speak.
Go ahead, Heather.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so I, I had two questions just on operations. The security director left about five weeks ago and I was wondering what we're doing to replace that position or what's going on with that?
So we've, we've held interviews and we've already made an offer to the replacement, Airport Security Coordinator, and so they're currently on staff and, and getting up to speed now.
Okay, so that wasn't posted, it's just someone from the red end that we've got?
We can't hear you, you're too far away from the microphone.
Sorry.
Yeah, it was an intern, it was an internal candidate, that position was posted, but the, we selected an internal candidate.
Gotcha, okay. If you could just keep me appraised for that, that would be wonderful. Just a second. You're me now?
Absolutely.
Okay. Sorry, guys, I'm getting a little worse for wear as we go on. This is a long day for me. The federal mask mandate, I just saw that that was removed, so what are we doing in our airport? I saw some notice, but my understanding is, or what are we doing in our airport for, for that?
So yes, a, a judge just lifted the federal mask mandate and so staff at the airport right now, we're in the process of removing the signs that we had in place enforcing that mandate. It's my understanding that there were some announcements aboard some flights yesterday when that mandate was lifted, that a variety of airlines told passengers who were comfortable that they were able to continue their flight without wearing the mask. So there's still a lot going on with regard to that situation and so we do have a variety of systems in place that should the Biden administration or the Transportation Security Administration come back and, and reinstate that mandate, that we will be able to react accordingly.
But are we, but are we canceling that in our airport now that that's been removed? I'm just, I mean, if it's a federal I'm just, I mean, if it's a federal judge saying that, I'm just wondering legally, are we still okay to say it's required in our airport?
Yes, yes. So legally, and I've touched base with our county attorney and staff, we are in line with that legal finding that the federal mask mandate has been lifted. So, we are not requiring people that are within our terminal who are comfortable, we're not requiring them to wear masks at this time.
Okay, our signage, everything reflects all that, yes?
We're in the process of doing that. We have a number of different signs throughout the terminal. Of course, the electronic signs that we have, those are easy to deactivate. We have a variety of different pieces of signage that are throughout the terminal that was meant to remind passengers of the mandate. We're in the process of getting those either covered or removed right now.
Okay, and that'll be taken down soon because I just want to make sure we're following the...
Absolutely. As soon as practical, as soon as practical. Staff's on it now.
Okay, all right. I think that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so our largest operating expenses make up nearly 73% of our total operation budget. $2.3 million is left over for insurance and bonds. Of course, fuel is a challenge as fuel prices increase, rental of equipment, registration fees, communication, travel, waste collection, and et cetera. So, in the discussion about our fiscal year '23 capital budget, we mentioned earlier about the security system upgrade. This is a very comprehensive program. So, with that being said, we are looking at a variety of ways to get this program funded. Originally, it was going to be a state grant, but now that we have a variety of other resources at our fingertips, we're going to look towards using those in order to make sure that we get the best security system possible. Also, previously, the runway 25 right, runway safety area improvements, that was a recommendation that came from our last Federal Aviation Administration certification inspection. And runway safety areas are the areas that are around the runway that in the event an aircraft has an excursion, that they will still be able to remain intact. And also, their safety areas have to be able to hold firefighting vehicles and other vehicles intact during dry conditions. So, safety areas are very important to have in place. And then also, same with the airfield signage improvements for wayfinding for the pilots that are on the airfield. The Federal Aviation Administration, through our Airport Operating Certificate, mandate that our signage systems be up to par, and so we are actively working with that in order to adhere to those mandates. Capital improvements continued. Our parking lot improvement moves on to phase two through four. Originally, we took care of the parking lot paving. Now, this next phase deals with wayfinding signage, which is at 100% design. We're getting ready to go out to bid for that. Lighting, the LED lights are going to save us money long-term but also provide for safety for our travelers that are using our parking lot. The canopy, of course, for customer convenience, our Florida weather, we know how that goes. But also, we are getting ready to look at our improvements for Innovation Way, which is the last leg of that project. The majority of that project's being funded either through state grants or also our customer facility charges that I mentioned previously. The Airport Terminal Emergency Generator System, I don't know if I'm allowed to say the H-word, but in order to ensure business continuity, in the event that the H-word does happen to come into our region, we need to make sure that we have a generator system in place so we can continue business services. The grant or the bids came back a lot higher than anticipated, so we're working with the state to try to figure out how they want us to move forward with that. And then, our Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Access Road, of course, there is a federal mandate from the FAA, a time requirement that it takes for the firefighting vehicles to reach certain parts of the airport, and so in order to aid in that process, we have an access road project from our newly updated fire station to a very active taxiway, which will help reduce that time response requirement.
So, can I ask you a question on that? I forgot before, when you were talking about as we increase the number of passengers, there's certain things that kick in with rental cars and expansions we have to do. How long is the fire station out there suited for? I mean, it's a great fire station, but as we increase riders, is there some trigger that that would have to be expanded or?
So, the fire station itself, I think, is fully, can fully accommodate, let's say for instance, if there is a need to bring on additional firefighting staff. I mean, we just took into possession two new crash trucks, and those are the big fluorescent yellow vehicles that they're first on the scene to help put out fire and clear pathway for passengers should there be an aircraft accident on the airfield. In terms of how the FAA looks at it, they call it an index, and we are well-equipped to handle the index based on the type of aircraft that we serve. The majority of the aircraft actually are a lot smaller than what we have our index, what our index amount is. So, yeah, we're fully capable. Now, if there are additional operations, of course, we're trying to get more airlines. The airlines itself probably going to be a flight or two a day or whatever the case may be, that's not going to trigger the need to necessarily bring on additional assistance, but what will trigger the need is Embry-Riddle, as they keep adding aircraft, that's going to add more flight activity. And then, if there's another competing flight training entity that's on the airport and they add operations, we're looking at a number based on that operation, the numbers of takeoffs and landings that we have that kind of help support that, other than the number of passengers. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, yes, it does, thank you.
All right, and so in discussion about capital outlay, a lot of these are in line with what's required in order for us to adhere to our federal mandates. So, compact multi-use high-speed tractor in order to keep grass levels at certain points to where we don't trigger wildlife requirements that are in our airport certification manual. As I mentioned with our need for a generator, our partners with the Customs and Border Protection Office for our international traffic, they'll need a generator too, since we're a user fee airport, we're required by contract to take care of some of the facilities that they have. Light carts and sweeper truck as well. Sweeper truck helps keep our runways and taxiways and ramps free of what we call FOD, or foreign object debris. And those of you that are familiar with the Concorde, I think the final death knell in that aircraft's chartered life was the fact that there was FOD on the runway in Paris that ended up starting that chain of reaction of events that ultimately sunk that aircraft. So, just a little bit of trivia for you. All right, so some of our future challenges, we mentioned before when we talked about parcel 62 and some areas that are to the southeast of the airport, we are ramp starved. And so, while we have so many inquiries and so many different entities that want to build on the airport, we need to make sure that the parcels are pad-ready, they're ready to build on, and so we're trying to do everything that we can be with regard to being proactive and making sure that these areas around the airport can accommodate some of the interests that we've been receiving. Increase in air service, that is for an airport of our size, that's a tremendous challenge. I think we have the right team onboard, we have the right consultant, and as we start to talk about incentive discussions, industry-wide, it's a situation where some airlines have approached airports similar in our size, and they're asking for minimum revenue guarantees. So, as those discussions start to take place, we'll be sure to bring some information to you because a lot of that takes the community support as a whole for, you know, those airlines to make that commitment. But fortunately, I think some of the airlines that we're in discussions with now, I think they just want to be here, so we'll keep our fingers crossed to that. Standards, maintaining and modernizing the airfield, and part of the reason why that bipartisan infrastructure law came to be was to help airports find ways in order to keep up with federal mandates and compliance. Number one for the FAA, of course, is safety, security is, you can't really rank them one or another above each other, so safety and security projects are taking precedent with regard to this unprecedented amount of money that's going to be allotted for infrastructure improvement. And so, you know, we want to be in on the ground level and be ultra-competitive so our citizens and those who use our facilities are afforded the same thing that other people in the national airspace environment are afforded. And then, the last two bullet points, you've probably seen on a variety of other service level presentations, we're up against the same thing, recruitment and talent retention as well as inflationary costs. Field costs affect us greatly. We got a lot of activity that requires that, and then also, as it pertains to the equipment that we need in order to meet our mandates on the airfield, there are some long lead times as a result of that, and so those are challenges moving forward. Hopefully, supply chain improves, but, you know, I don't know who has the crystal ball to let us know whether or not we're headed in the right direction with that regard, so. Any questions as it pertains to the Airport Division?
Heather?
I'm working on it.
Any questions since I can't see you?
No, I'm good, thank you so much.
Nobody else? Well done.
It's been a pleasure.
Yeah, we are looking forward to what you're doing there, and we've all told you this, we're really glad you're here, you have a tremendous staff, and...
I am honored.
You've salted the oats that now we're all waiting to hear what you might have in store in the next rest of this year, so.
Well, there's a lot of wheels turning in my head, and as I get with my industry colleagues, I try to steal as many ideas and as many success moments that they've had and try to find a way to inject that here, and I would not be able to do that without this staff. I tell you, I sat on Karen's panel as she became an accredited airport executive, and also with Eric and Mihai, actually, how we know each other is he was on the Board of Examiners with me, and so we were in the trenches trying to get people to develop themselves professionally as it pertains to airport management. So, I think with this team, they're going to knock it out of park, so, thank you.
Thank you, well done. Now, can I have a motion to accept this report?
So, move.
Motion by the entire County Council to accept. I'm going to take it from Johnson and Billy for the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Seven to zero. Now, the question comes, it's 12:40, the Ocean Center is already making their way down. Does the council want a break? Do we take a lunch break before the final item or push on?
Just finish.
He's been eating the whole time.
Let's go, let's move on.
Yeah, let's, please sit down.
That brings us to item 17, the Ocean Center Budget and Service Level Presentation. We're not, there's no stopwatch.
All right. Good afternoon, I think it is now, Council. Appreciate your time. She'll let Cyrus just step here and put up my slides, let him keep talking. I will say it's just me here with you today. Monday and Tuesday are kind of the days we breathe in clean at Ocean Center between our big events, and we've had a good run of them with cheerleaders, ROTC students, and we're turning now for, got 1,000 key clubbers coming to town tomorrow.
Wow.
And then Florida Water Resource Conference this weekend, and somehow we squeezed in wrestling on Sunday, but that's got a good bit of activity there for you. I will say, I will echo what Cyrus said about his staff. We've got a great team at Ocean Center, a lot of people that are dedicated, dedicated staff, and they're dedicated to the people they serve and the work they do. Couldn't do it without them as well. There we go. This first chart just shows you the three primary areas of work at Ocean Center, operation of the venue itself, and then the adjacent parking garage right across Earl Street from us, and then we put Ocean Center Capital because, you know, we're one of the probably largest complexes the county has as a fiscal asset, and we're only 400 feet from the ocean, so it's always a lot of work going on in that regard and continual refurbishment of the building, but these are the three primary areas of work. A quick look at the Ocean Center position chart, we have there, it's what you'd expect, the accounting, IT, event services, and sales are two of our biggest areas, and then operations and maintenance, again, a lot of staff there to set up, tear down, and maintain the facility. We have 38 funded positions, six of which are currently vacant, about 16%. But overall, we continue to strive to provide excellent customer service with that staff, generally get pretty good marks on that. I will say one thing that's not in this chart, which I think everybody should be cognizant of, is, you know, these are just Fallujah County positions. We have a food and beverage team at Ocean Center that's part of a contract. If they didn't provide that service, you know, we would have to have those employees. They used to have 13 full-time employees, they're back up to 11 now. They dropped down to five during the pandemic, but they're back to 11. And also together, you can't forget, we talk about FTEs all the time, but we employ, with Spectra, 50 to 80 part-time people each week down there. That's a lot of supplemental income for people looking for extra work or any work, and that shouldn't be forgotten because it's a big impact on the community, the number of people we have working taking care of those large events as they come through. In looking at the Ocean Center budget, the funding sources, charges for services, $1.8 million, that's from our facility rental, basically three primary areas, rental of the facility, equipment rental, things like your staging, your pipe and drape, things like that, and then food and beverage revenues. One thing, again, I would point out, the $1.8 million only includes, and this is fiscal year '22 budget, we had $375,000 in there for commissions from our food and beverage. We'll end up around $500,000 this year. Business is coming back, coming back stronger than we had even hoped, but to generate those commissions, there's $3 to $3.5 million of gross revenues that you don't really see in that $1.8 because we take a piece as it flows by, so to speak. But the facility generates $6 to $6.5 million in its own revenues with food and beverage, and then we have the tourism development tax, $7.5 million, which comes into play as All right, budget for Ocean Center, which totals some $8,60,000. You can see Personnel Services at $3 million. The same note you've heard, again, I heard Cyrus say the same thing, projected at a wage increase of 4% for '23 with the increase in group insurance in the Florida retirement system, operating expenses of $4.8 million. That capital you see on this slide is just what we call capital outlay, kind of minor, that's usually expensed within the 118 fund, things, I think we've got a forklift in there, a floor scrubber as well, but all of our major capital is part of another fund, which I know you're going to have a whole presentation on capital later, so we don't go into a lot of detail on that as well. The next slide continues, the Ocean Center budget. You see here reserves for future capital, which are taken out of the '22 budget for future years, and at the bottom of that page, you see the transfers to capital during the current year. I often refer to this as a Mr. Van Cleek's world that we just live in on this slide. Those numbers usually generated by Budget Department, but I have this in here, and it's a, I think it's important to try to tie it all together because you see the county budget book, 700 pages. budget book, 700 pages, I mean, it's hard to tie things together sometimes. But if you take the 8,600 from the previous slide, add it to these two numbers you see here, that totals the 13.8 million in tourism development tax, which you see in the budget book as total Ocean Center sources and uses of funds, so to speak. So that's why I had this slide here, to kind of help tie it all together for everyone. In looking at the Ocean Center operating expenses, the top five, once you get beyond personnel, utilities, big building, lots of, lots of space to heat and cool and provide for, so utilities is our largest single expense beyond personnel. Property insurance is another biggie. I saw the airports was a little less than ours. Of course, we are 400 feet from Mother Nature's worst sometimes, so that's, that's probably part of that that's figured into that as well. And then maintenance of building and grounds, again, another major item for us. Again, we operate in a relatively harsh environment, being so close to the ocean. Hear a lot of words about chloride intrusion and things I didn't know the definition of two years ago, but do now. And you see the advertising and promotion, that's a half million dollars and you probably don't see much of it. You hear a little bit about us on the radio because we help sponsor Fallujah Today and some things like that, us and Votran, but our advertising is all outside of the area. You know, we're about bringing people to town. We don't really advertise locally too much at all. But you see, those are the largest expenses and these expenses, and the temp personnel, shouldn't let that go without saying, you know, 433,000, that number we anticipate could be a little over budget this year, but I will say it's one of the few times you can see a budget numbered and if it's a little higher than budgeted, can be a good thing. That means we've got more activity than we anticipated. And, and again, our business is coming back strong and that's another, a good, a good thing. The next slide here, we've got a little video clip we're going to show you. And it's more about not who we are, but how we do what we do. Because we, we have a wide diversity and wide array of events at Ocean Center that help us bring economic impact to town. I heard the chair say a few minutes ago, the rising tide raises all boats and that's exactly what Ocean Center is and does. So we're like the little moon on the beach that kind of helping suck the tide in. And again, when we fill up, there are only so many hotels within a mile of Ocean Center. We fill those up, those people that were going to be there, they spread out and they continue to go further. So that's exactly what we do is we try to raise the tide for all businesses. You'll see a mission statement in this next, at the beginning of the video clip. It's a little hard to read, but it basically has four key components. It's raising the awareness of Ocean Center as a venue to the meetings and trade show industry. It's economic impact, that's our primary driving force behind all the bookings that we do. We have a six-tiered booking policy. Three of those six tiers mention room nights, it's top, top three tiers. So for us, it's all about economic impact as the driving force. And then we talk about efficient operation and we strive to operate that building as efficiently as possible. And then the fourth is providing a positive experience. And that's not just for the customer that signs our contract and signs a check, it's for those attendees who are coming to an event at Ocean Center. We don't tend to have a very positive experience as well. But I think the video will show you all the, all the types of things that we have that come through there that, that make us, that help us generate this economic impact. I'll let Megan play it for you. Thank you, Megan. We can go to the next slide now. Oops, that's me, I'm sorry. There we go. I want to say first of all, the, the little part of the clip, it looked like there was a big concert going on, that was not 20 years ago, that was last year. Three times, we had three big youth groups that come every year and they bring 3,000 to 6,000 kids, from the smallest to the largest, for seven days each. And, you know, you think about 6,000 kids times seven days times three meals a day, that's a lot of eating going on, you know, beachside. And so again, may not be a concert, but it's like having twice, two concerts a day.
Can you pause one second?
Was that, was that a Christian, is that the Christian groups?
That was Passion Camp, right there.
Yeah, thank you.
So you're right. And yeah, we do that three times. This year, we've got the same three groups and one week between them, we've got Florida Roofing coming for 100-year anniversary event between two of them, so we've got to take all that down and put it back up. But we'll do so for paying customers, which is, which is the name of the game. This slide here is a few, are a few Ocean Center, what I call Ocean Center stats. This and another slide, I wanted to give you just a little information. Tourism Development Council meets four times a year, Ms. Wheeler chairs that, and we give out a lot of information to that group about room nights and attendees and things like that. And I think about questions you may get as council members and it's probably going to come from sometimes that realm, not just numbers, but, you know, at the end of the day, we're probably going to be judged on how many people we bring to town and how many room nights we generate. So I wanted to show you a little bit about that as well, too. But you see here, this is for calendar '21, 113 events, 329 what we call facility use days and 319,000 attendee days. I will tell you, of those three stats, the number of events is the least important on the screen. I just don't get hung up on the number of events that much because truth be told, if we only had 50 events a year, but each one of them lasted a week, took the whole building and brought in 10,000 hotel rooms, we'd all be happy with 50 events. So, but the other two are very important and good barometers of activity. I can tell you that in a normal pre-pandemic year, these numbers were at 130, 360 and 380,000. So we're getting back very close as of calendar '21. Now, we started this presentation for you all over a month ago. Last week, we had to turn in numbers for Budget Division, you know, to start looking at our numbers. And as part of that, we, we have to do some key performance indicators. So we went ahead and projected through the September 30th year end. And last week was the first time we've actually projected with contracted events on the books and I can tell you that for the year ending September 30th, it's 131, 366. Don't know the attendance yet, but that tells me we're close for calendar '21 and we're pretty much back, in my opinion. We'll see where the numbers fall out and everything's subject to change with pandemics. But I can tell you, this year, fiscal year '22, then the arena usage is up 23% over fiscal year '20. The last, the first six months of fiscal year '20 were normal pre-pandemic, you know, hit in March. So the first six months are pretty normal. So we're up 23% in the arena and 15% in the exhibit hall this year to date. So we're definitely having a good year. Next slide is last one I'll show you about the room nights. What you're going to see here, you see at the bottom of that screen, this was, this forecast was done as of December 31st and we forecast a three-year period in 12-month increments. So you see there the years, '22, '23, '24. For each one of these years, you're going to see two bars of information. The first are room nights that are associated with firm Ocean Center bookings. That means the event has either had a contract sent or contract returned, but it's a firm piece of business that is happening, that is contracted at the venue. The second bar you'll see for each year is all holds for all rooms associated with any Ocean Center holds that may not yet be contracted, but it's still out there in the hopper that we're churning through. That's what you'll see, they'll populate. You can see it for '22, we had almost 72,000 room nights forecast for calendar '22. The last normal year we had was 58,000 some odd and our forecast had been showing 65. So 72,000 is a very strong year. I will admit, we've lost one piece of business over a COVID concern, a lot of international travel, which was a 12,000-room hit to that number, so it put us back at 60. But as of today, we're back up to 65 again. We booked two pieces of business where that hole formed just two months ago. So our, our salespeople, I tell people when you're churning business, you see those all hose forecasts out there, you know, almost 100,000 rooms. Our people are constantly working, if you can imagine a jigsaw puzzle with three major spaces, exhibit hall, ballroom and arena, with 1,000 pieces that continually change as you're trying to put them together. It's, it's a, it's a hard task, but they continually sift through the calendar. We may have a, a group that needs a five-day run and we can only find a four-day window. Well, we don't just drop it, we go to the people on either side of them, say, can you move a day? If, if possible. We're, we try to be very nimble. So a lot goes into making the sausage at Ocean Center, if you will, and they do a pretty good job and this reflects that. Another question we get asked a lot is how much of this is new business? I'll tell you, a room night's a room night. Repeat, Passion Camp coming back this summer, I'll take them every summer as long as I keep bringing 6,000 kids for a week. But probably good to have some new business in the mix. These next few bars show you the percentage of new business as part of those holds. So it just shows that we're constantly churning new stuff into the mix as well because we're going to book some of it and some of it we're going to lose. But at the end of the day, it's a healthy mix and these numbers look very strong for us and we feel pretty good about the future. Everything continues to trend in the right direction with regard to our numbers. Okay, that's a lot about Ocean Center. A little bit about, in a little bit of time, we're going to shift to the adjacent parking garage. And again, the garage, it's right at 1,300 spaces, give or take a few. I will note, as you see these numbers, you need to remember that really for over a year, we've either had Deck Two out of service for refurbishment and then Deck Six is currently being worked on even as I stand here and talk. And the contractor says they'll be through with Deck Six hopefully by the end of May. They know when high school graduations are and we're pushing hard. So, and they tell me they think it'll be ready to have the whole garage back in time for high school graduations. But the garage, you see the, their, their charges for services, daily parking rates, special event rates. I will mention the garage revenue has also recovered. It's, it's projected to be around 2.3 to 2.4 million this year, projecting 2.6 for next year. We really haven't changed the garage rates. We came to you in late 2019. The only rate we really changed at that time was to go from $5 event rate to $10 event rate. You see the special event rate, the special events, 1.2 million. That's all that really changed. At that time, we also added an extra hour on the daily rate, but we didn't change the tiered rate. You had one to four hours with a maximum of $8. We basically just added a fifth hour at the end of that for $10. But the rates, the one through $8 did not change by the half hour within that. And maybe something we want to consider looking at because the garage is, is no different than Ocean Center and continues to need a lot of tender loving care, I guess you could say, being a large structure right next to the ocean. You have the budget for the parking garage?
Can, can you back up?
Yes, sir.
Or just halt, pause for one sec. What's the difference between the first charge for services at 8:51 and the charge for services special events 1.2?
The 8:51 is a regular daily transient parking where people just come to the area, either go to the band shell, go to the beach, go to the ocean walk shops, but are just visiting the area and parking the garage and pay a, the tiered rate, whatever that may be. The special event rate is when we have oceans, a major event going on at Ocean Center, we switch the parking to the event rate, which is $10 per car. We don't, and we don't, doesn't matter what you're going to, if you're going to park an Ocean Center property, when we've got like 8,000 cheerleaders in the building, all our parking is $10.
So the 1.2 is a standalone number, the 8:51 is not included in that?
Oh, no, sir, they are separate. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brower.
Yes.
Ms. Post would also like to speak, I believe at the end of the presentation, though.
Okay.
Any other questions on this? And I will say the Ocean Center loan, Ocean Center did provide a loan to the parking garage for fiscal '22. Again, with the garage under construction with different decks, that's to kind of make them whole. The, we did the same thing for Deck Six when the bids were opened in this current year as we actually increased that a little bit. And we'll talk more about the garage. The garage debt service is 875,000 a year. We had to pay it fiscal year '22, '23 and '24 and then it's finished, which will be a boon to the garage. It frees up almost another million dollars every year available for capital needs for the garage in the not-too-distant future. And here you see the garage budget. Again, you see that debt service I just referenced, 875,000, but the total garage budget, 3.6 million. I mentioned revenues, 2.3 to 2.4, that's why the Ocean Center loan of 1.2, to make up the difference in those two numbers. And here you see the top expenses for the garage. No surprise, I guess in March of 19 is when we took on the contract management for the actual daily operation, the day-to-day parking operation of the garage, that's the $609,000 contract. That is an amount that, it varies just a little bit with inflation year by year, but basically stays in that 609 to 615 range over the term of the contract. Security services, $106,000. We've actually saved a little money. We used to use off-duty police officer, we now use the firm that has a master agreement with Fallujah County, saved us about $20,000 a year. Facility maintenance and utilities kind of rounded out with the remaining operating budget at 312,000 for the garage. As far as number of customers served, you can see that the garage last year, fiscal year, served about a quarter of a million vehicles. And the last pre-pandemic year was 259,000, thereabout. So we're, again, pretty much close to normal. And this is without a deck in operation, either Deck Two or Deck Six during that time. So it kind of hamstrung us a little bit, but the garage activity is certainly picking up. I saw March numbers right before I came over here and they're up about 10% over March of last year. So the garage continues every month to, not as big a difference as lodging tax, but the garage continues to do better as well. I said I'd try to get you finished in 15 minutes. Future challenges for Ocean Center and the garage, again, saw it with the airport, you probably see it with everybody you talk to. Workforce availability and cost of that workforce is something we continue to struggle with. Again, at Ocean Center proper, the full-time, it's, it's a struggle, but the part-timers is where we really have a challenge. You know, we use a lot of part-timers from services and, and all those services are in the same boat. You know, we may order 30 people on a Saturday morning and 12 show up, you know, when we're trying to take care of a huge crowd because we've got the, tons of restroom facilities and lots of, lots of trash cans empty when you're that busy. But I will say it's better than it was six months ago, but it's still a challenge and that's something we'll continue to face. Adapting for climate amenities, what I mean by that is the things like, you know, people expect to have Wi-Fi like air, breathe it and it should be free, is what most of them think. And you can get it free at Ocean Center if you just want to check your email. If you want to watch a movie, you're going to watch a spinning ball for a long time. If you want the good stuff, you got to pay for it, you know, just like you do with a lot of things in life. But again, keeping up with the Joneses and what our competition has and making sure we can stay competitive with our, with venues we compete against is important. And those last three there are all kind of related. We mentioned Ocean Center capital needs, parking garage refurbishment, Deck Two, which we repaired, Deck Six, which is under repair, are the, are the ones that needed the most attention. Deck Three, Four and Five are still there and waiting and the garage has other infrastructure needs that we're planning on as well. We have joined with Fallujah's Facilities Division in developing a master plan, which is good. We know a lot about these venues because we manage them, but I'm not a construction manager. And so it's good to get the construction people involved in some of that long-term planning and we're doing that as well. But those, you know, taking care of a huge complex next to the ocean is important. We do feel like it's the goose that's laying the golden egg, you know, bringing those people to town and all those room nights and, and we, we've done a good job of maintaining it. We get a lot of positive comments from our customer on its condition. When you remember the arena at the heart of our building is 37 years old now and still, still cranking out the business. So again, but it is a challenge to keep it in that first-class condition. And I think that concludes my summary. Happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I was going to get her before we go. Heather, do you want to go first or?
I can, I can wait. Thank you.
Okay, I was just going to ask, on, on, when there's things locally, are we doing local advertising with that in any ways?
Well, what we do is, you know, we, we tell people, when a promoter rents our building to sell tickets to the public, it's his job to promote that event. I mean, he's the one making, you know, making the big income. We do promote as much as we can on our social media channels, we've got the marquee, so we spread the word everywhere we can, but we do not expend Ocean Center taxpayer dollars to advertise private events.
I know the calendar that you've been sending out, I post that, boy, I just get tons of people that are very grateful of that. And the other thing is, on the Ocean Center, I know you and I've talked about this as well with the tourist development group. Where are we looking at, where we're going to head with that? I mean, expansion or what, as the money builds up, how are we planning on?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. We've got, you know, we.
I knew you would be.
The last, the last actual study of the Ocean Center was done in fiscal year '15, the $6 million that was being used to run Ocean Center was generating 95 million in economic impact. I can only tell you that number's going to be bigger, because I know we're busier. But we do have an RFP, there's an RFP out on the street now for another firm to come in and do a kind of a three-part deal. Look at our utilization, see how we stack up compared to our competition. And I think we'll show that we're, we may not be the busiest convention center around, but we're not slack in that area. We do a lot of events. And then economic impact, to be able to say what we're actually generating for the community. And then the third part, assuming those first two are favorable and look well, do we need to look at potential expansion? And that involves not just looking at Ocean Center. We can't do it alone. We've got a nice building, but if the hotels don't play the game, you know, it's hard for us to do business. And we're in a time that is interesting because it's a, it's a good time. But when hotels are seeing record ADR and good occupancy, and rates are as high as they are, they're also a little more hesitant to give up to group business because it's not as profitable sometimes, or not as high margin. So it's a double-edged sword. It's a, I look at it, and I tell our salespeople, I just keep getting them to quote. You know, if somebody walks away because of rates, they walk away. But at the end of the day, I'd rather be struggling with a rate problem and with not having enough days to sell than sitting there with an empty convention center praying for the phone to ring. So it's a good problem. I mean, I'd be thankful for the type of problems you have sometimes, so that's just, but that is a challenge.
And two short questions. One of them is, I hear a lot, why do we not have concerts anymore? Because it used to be years ago, we had some really good concerts.
Now I've got a letter, I probably, I probably should send to every one of you.
Yeah.
It's a kind of a letter I adjust, but I send when people ask that question. The world has changed in that area, first of all, and Ms. Conchen probably speak to this. I call her my concert nag. I'll go ahead and admit it. But the, in the old days, a regional promoter, when they found out somebody was going to tour, they would bid on it, when you're talking your first-tier acts. But now you have AEG and Live Nation kind of control the acts nationwide, and they route them. They have their own buildings sometimes that they route them to. And if you look at just demographics, you know, 30 years ago, we were the only arena in central Florida of any size. Now we've got Amway Center a mere 40 miles away. We've got a very nice outdoor venue in St. Augustine, their amphitheater. So it's tougher from the standpoint that there's less control of the regional promoter. I think there is a niche that we can find, but I will also tell you, if you looked at Ocean Center right now, wanted to do a concert sometime in 2022, I've only got three days you can look at. October 22, which is one that we lost from a Star's Edge Avatar that we haven't filled yet, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. Those are the only three Saturdays right now our arena is open. And I'm, you know, sorry, but I'm glad we're booked. So it's hard from that standpoint. You know, we're not going to turn away a four-day convention for a one-night concert. And because of the economic impact is our primary driving force. So, you know, we're open to it, and we're open to look at packaging deals and doing splits on certain types of ticket revenue and whatnot versus saying, here's our flat rate, pay it or leave. We're very open-minded, but it kind of takes something that would be willing to fit within our calendar with the economic impact drivers that we have and work with us. Now, if somebody wants to do a concert on Monday or Tuesday, we will talk.
And my final question is, and this is, you'll understand this, are we getting the strong man event back? And I have to throw that out because I came back on an airline flight with the national winter that was coming to our event, and I sat next to him. I felt so protected.
If a backstage pass falls in your wastebasket by some kind of, it's definitely on the books.
Okay, you can, you can probably add Billy and I to Suzanne's concert nag list. For me, it's, you know, I'm a product of the '70s, the era of the best music in America, including a couple hold loaders from the late '60s of Beatles and The Who. But are the, you really just answered my question. But two that I get from the public, one is, do we not get concerts because the sound is not good enough? I know you just upgraded the sound. Is that any issue?
Not really, and I will tell you, even though, you know, we did a million-dollar upgrade, probably half a million of which went to the arena, and I'm just generalizing, because the arena got all-new speaker arrays, and Ms. Conchen heard a demonstration. It's very good sound. But most concerts bring their own. They don't want to use the venue sound. A lot of them will bring their own anyway. So sound is not really an issue. It's more about for us, and availability is probably one of the big. We had two concerts booked over the last six months. Both fell away through various reasons. I mean, whether it's promotion on their side, not able to get the act they thought they could get. It's not that we don't book them. We've had two booked, but they just don't come to fruition.
And the sound question that I get was not so much from speakers, but architecture. Was there a need for baffling or something like that?
I think we've got a major arena refurbishment for fiscal year '24, '25 kind of timeframe out there to refurbish the seating. I think that's something we probably should look at if something can be done. I don't deny Ocean Center has a lot of hard surfaces.
But it's not, from what you just said, the trade show and the sports event sounds like they're much more profitable than a one-night concert.
Well, a one-night concert can be great, and they also generate hotel rooms. But again, do you kick out five days of business for one? That's the tough question. And right now, we would say usually not.
So to modernize myself, we're not getting Chris Stapleton?
We'll look into it.
Who said who?
Hey, in all this time, I thought you were Paracoma Man. George. Yeah. You're not getting Chris Stapleton because unless something happens to the Amway Center or...
Camping World?
Camping World Stadium. That, what, the landscape has changed. And when we had a lot of concerts back in 20 years ago, 15 years ago, the county was co-promoting. In order to get started back in the '80s even, they were co-promoting, meaning they were putting up the money for these concerts. So that's another part of it. If we were to have a concert series, they would expect minimum guarantees. They would want to know that those tickets are going to be, those seats are going to be full. So it is a different dynamic. We occasionally pick things up, as we said. You know, we picked up a major act a few years ago because they actually wanted to redesign their stage. They rented the Ocean Center for a week and practiced, and then had a concert at the end of it. So there's opportunities like that. And then if something did happen to one of the major arenas around here, we picked up Elton John a few years before that. So things happen, but if you're going to get into concert business in full, when you see those series, or you see what's going on in the places, they're promoting. They're part of it as well. So, and as Tim said, in some cases with major deals, with Live Nation and AIG, they're going to get routed pretty much these days to your major cities, Jacksonville, Orlando, Tampa, Miami, when they go out at all. Because a lot of them don't even tour like they used to.
Well, some of it's upside, just like Mr. Reckonwell mentioned. I mean, if you have to sell 7,000 seats to break even, you can maybe make 2,000 seats of gravy at our place. If you get past that, Amway, you can make, you know, 12,000 seats of gravy. So it's, part of that plays into it as well.
Exactly. Or our tickets would be so expensive, it would hit the price point.
Okay, Heather?
Yes, thank you for the presentation, Tim. I have to tell you, my two favorite, I mean, I love concerts and everything, but I really enjoy the Florida Truck Driving Championships every year and seeing them, you know, literally pull the semi-wheels along the edge of a dime. And also the Drill Team Championships, which just passed. And unfortunately, I had to miss this year. I was very sad about that. But I have a question. You talked a lot about the numbers and the fact that, you know, we're not specifically focused on the number of events, but more on the how many beds it's going to fill, which makes sense. But I'm wondering as to the marketing. I see that we have, let me try and pull this up, on your position chart, the sales and marketing team. But it sounded to me as if these sales were more, is that more of your marketing? Just people sort of reaching out? Or are we actively marketing the Ocean Center? Is that something that's even something we need to do? Because it sounds like you're, you said every Saturday is full except for three?
It is a, it's kind of a two-pronged approach. And we do have the sales staff there. We have four people in our sales division. A director of sales who's also a working salesperson handles our sports market, which we do very well in. And then we have three other people that cover different markets, whether it's corporate, whether it's what we call SMURF, religious, educational, military markets. And they go to trade shows. So some of that money you see there is to get them out to where these people, these trade shows are, press to flash. I would tell you, convention selling is still very much a eye-to-eye conversation, you know, face-to-face conversation, because these people are trusting that we will take good care of them when they bring their association to town, that we have the capability, the venue, and the staff to do so. And then the other is real advertising dollars. You know, you can name the alphabet soup, you know. All these conventions, Convention South Magazine, we advertise in lots of sports publications. We advertise in some consumer show areas. We've been missing what I call the flat shows the last couple of years, RV shows, boat shows. Haven't had them. Supply chain issues for them more than anything else. But it is a two-pronged approach. We do it with people on the road, and then we do it with spending dollars. More shifted digitally over the last five years than print magazines. And we try to do it strategically. We actually work, and we've got a marketing and communication specialist. If we're going to go to a religious trade show, we'll try to target that religious trade show's website the two weeks before that show with a banner ad. So as they're going to the site to gather information on the city of the conference, they'll see Ocean Center Daytona Beach ads on their website, and then they'll see us on the floor. So have some familiarity when they see us, like, oh, that's those guys that were running that banner ad, you know. So it's, you have to be a little strategic, and again, it's a two-pronged approach. It's some of both.
Okay, I know that that's typically a general question that I have about the Ocean Center, so I'm glad you clarified.
Thank you.
And that's really all the question, that's the only question I had. So thank you so much. I know, I know it's been tough through the pandemic, but you guys have really kept it afloat. So thanks for all your work there. And thank you to the, to all the staff there. I know you have a lot of people behind the scenes that do a lot of stuff, not just the catering teams, but Volusia County has a lot of people in the background that work there and keep it actually running. So thank you to all of you.
I'll pass that along. Thank you for saying so.
Just one last question about the numbers. On the operating expenses, it's a little over $8 million. You have $8,60,000. And on revenue, I'm adding up the three, it's about $10 million. But $7.5 million is from the resort tax. So anything that you can do in charge for services is, really helps us to...
Correct.
To make the Ocean Center. What's the best avenue for doing that?
Well, I've actually shared with Ms. Conchen a time or two. We just recently raised our rental rates, you know, for Ocean Center proper. But it really is an approach where, instead of waiting 10 years and having a major increase, it's kind of a rotation. We should raise rent, then the next year hit equipment charges, the things I mentioned, like your staging, your pipe and drape, your dance floor, all the things that people use when they come into our building. And then you've got food and beverage, and you really ought to hit those in a cycle. You know, hit rent, hit equipment, look at your food and beverage pricing, go right back to rent. So you're not, you know, you're basing on a three-year cycle with all of your revenue streams, and you're kind of keeping them updated for cost, but also market. Sometimes, sometimes your costs may not go up, but if the market will bear, maybe you should look at an increase.
Okay. What I didn't hear in that, and maybe, I guess it goes back to Heather's question about, about marketing. How important is it to market just the Ocean Center and the beauty of that area to bring people from Canada and all over the country?
Well, our marketing is not the shotgun like you see the CVBs do, where they're trying to just draw people to destination from everywhere. Ours is fairly targeted, because we're trying to get to meeting planners who make decisions to bring groups to town. We're not just doing a scattergun, hey Canadians, we've got a great venue. We need to find a meeting planner in Vancouver to bring a convention here, not just have Canadians say, oh, look, that looks like a nice venue. Because it's, at the end of the day, we've got to find the decision-maker to sign that contract, is what we're after.
Or you're in front of the wrong person, otherwise.
Yeah, could be.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion to, motion to approve the report by Wheeler, second by Johnson. Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, and do you want lunch before? Okay. You want to check with Ben or just ignore him? Okay. Why don't we take, it's 1:23, why don't we take a lunch break until 2 o'clock? And then we'll resume. Thank you.
This is Volusia Today, a public information video program brought to you by the County of Volusia. Here is community information, Brian Vandal and Kevin Captain.
Good morning and welcome to Volusia Today. I'm Kevin Captain, and I'm joined by my co-host, Brian Vandal. Thank you so much for tuning in this morning. Volusia Today is made possible by our sponsors, the Daytona Beach International Airport, the Ocean Center, Volusia Recycles, and Votran Public Transportation. Hey, Brian, what's happening?
Not a whole lot.
So I think with all these April showers, we've got the perfect two guests today.
Yes, we are going green.
Yes, we are going green today, and as the prophet Kermit says, sometimes it's hard being green. But don't worry, we have two people that will help us recognize our, our carbon footprint and help us reduce that carbon footprint. We have Katrina Locke, she is the Sustainability and Resilience Manager, and Tom Carey, he is the Water Quality Manager, both for Volusia County.
And two great guests. So first of all, Katrina got the memo, she's wearing green.
Yep.
But Tom didn't get the memo.
We were talking about septic tanks.
There you go.
So good morning, Tom. Good morning, Katrina. So Tom, let's start out first, the, the county conducted a growth management and permitting workshop recently, and one of the prominent things that was discussed in the workshop is, is water quality and water conservation, particularly how it, how it's affected by growth and development. And so it was a great workshop. And, you know, certainly growth management is not one of those topics where none of us here can hit the easy button. So, but what can you tell us about what the county is doing in terms of, you know, smart growth, water conservation, and, and to improve the quality of our water here in Volusia County?
Well, I think we're really doing a lot, Kevin. A lot of people don't realize it, but since 1988, we've had a water sampling team to go out and sample nearly all of our water bodies in Volusia County. We're talking about 120 sites on our rivers, lakes, springs, and, and that, you know, getting that data over time is very important to us, because we can see where we've been, where we are, and kind of where we may be going. And so I think we have a pretty comprehensive monitoring plan. And, and that helps us a lot in making decisions about growth and things of that nature, and where we might want to, you know, target our education. So I think we've got a real good plan on that. You know, as far as water conservation, since about that time, since about the early 90s, we've had a water conservation ordinance. And, you know, you're only allowed to water so many days per week and so many hours per day, and you have to have a rain sensor if you have an automatic timer. So that's really important. You know, another thing is, a few years ago, we implemented a Waterwise ordinance, which is, it actually controls the installation of irrigation systems.
Okay.
To make them more efficient. So, you know, little by little, we try to, you know, make everything more conservative, more, you know, friendly towards the environment as far as pollution control and things of that nature. So a lot of irons in the fire. We're up against, you know, a lot of things. We have a legacy load of pollutants that have, you know, been occurring over time. Plus, we have more people coming in all the time.
Sure.
And we're continuing to grow. So, you know, we're kind of like that gerbil on the treadmill sometimes, it feels, you know, trying to catch up with everything that's happening. But, you know, personal responsibility, everybody needs to do, do their part. You know, we like to say that everybody's part of the problem, but everybody's part of the solution.
Absolutely. You know, and you're talking about irrigation, and, and I know we've talked in the past before about, you know, you mentioned the rain sensor.
Right.
And those irrigation contractors that go in and then they replace irrigation or they upgrade it, they upgraded mine recently. And, but, but the gentleman told me, he said, you know, these rain sensors, they may, they may not last the life of your system.
Right.
So be mindful of going in there and making sure it works and replace it, if, if it needs to be replaced.
Exactly. And, you know, contractors that don't put them in or say they don't last very long, well, you know, your oil in your car doesn't last very long either, but you change it every once in a while, right? So that's irrigation systems.
Sure. It's a mechanical part.
That's exactly right.
Anything mechanical, it's going to go wrong.
It's going to wear out. Right. And you replace it. So a rain sensor is the same thing. So it's just all part of it.
So what is our general health of our water bodies right now?
Depends where you look.
Okay. Well, let's look in the, the good places.
Okay, right. Well, you know, in, in our springs, we have challenges. We have three outstanding Florida Springs, Gemini, DeLeon Springs and Blue Spring, and all three are impaired for water quality. Typically nitrogen, too much nitrogen there, and the nitrogen comes from either fertilizers, septic tanks, pet waste. So there's a few sources of them. So we have a basin management action plan on all three of those springs, where we're trying to improve the water quality in those springs. You know, our rivers, the St. John's River is actually a pretty decent, you know, water quality to, Halifax is a little bit impaired. And the Indian River, we have, we have a plan, actually a remedial action plan on that, and we're, it's actually fairly pristine, but we're trying to keep it that way. So, you know, there's a lot of dynamics in this county. We have a lot of wonderful water bodies, and, and the Alcoa as well. But every one of them is unique, and we have to handle each one of them differently, so.
And Katrina, let's talk a little bit about sustainability.
Yeah.
What exactly, how would you define sustainability? And what is the county doing environmentally to address sustainability?
Right. So there's different definitions of sustainability in the sense of like the way you, you actually say it, right? So one of them is to say something like, you know, we're, we're meeting the needs of today without compromising the needs of future generations. So in other words, really going back to some of the things that Tom talked about, we're using our resources wisely, we're being, we're conserving our resources, we're maybe not using resources that we don't need to use. So just really thinking about those natural resources, and, and like I said, being very, very mindful of our use. But from the county's perspective, we actually have a sustainability action plan that we have goals and objectives in that plan that we follow, and we're about to look at updating that over this next year and bringing it up to date based on the things that we've done and some of the things that we can do as we move forwards. And then from, you know, promoting it, we have lots of great programs in the county. We have lots of great facilities, not just county-run facilities, but others, but from the county's perspective, you know, we have Laonier Environmental Center, we have the Marine Science Center, we've got Deberry Hall, and Green Volusia, we've got a lot of programs going on there through Green Volusia as well, though we talk about, you know, how to do those three R's, you know, reduce, reuse, recycle.
Sure.
But then refuse and repurpose, because those are the other things that we like to talk about, you know, like
The five Rs.
Yeah. And like, next time you go to the store, do you need that plastic bag? Or, you know, is there something else I can use? Or before I throw this out, can somebody else in my family use it? Or can I send it to a store to be resold? Or, you know, what, is there something else I can use it for? And, or do I need to buy that? Because maybe I've got something at home that I could use instead or repurpose, you know? So there's, there's lots of great things you can do.
And all those little Rs add up to probably the big R is resiliency.
Right.
And that's probably a delicate balance between, you know, environmental concerns, the economic, that you want economic growth to your county, plus you have to think of the social aspects.
Right. So when you're looking at the sustainability piece, it's a very, you know, like tie between sustainability and resilience in that, you know, the, the emissions that we generate from the things that we do, you know, obviously are changing the climate. So if we start to think about what we can do to reduce those impacts, then we have, you know, positive effect on the emissions, so we're reducing those emissions. And so it's a positive effect on, on the climate. So, you know, I mean, it's a long term, and it's, you know, but every small thing that we do makes a difference, right? So we might think it's only a small thing that I'm doing, but if everybody around you in, you know, in your neighborhood and your community was doing that one small thing, then it all adds up.
We all share those same, you know, core values of sustainability and, and like Brian said, resiliency. You know, you mentioned the sustainability action plan and how important that is, and all of the many programs that the county does. You also work very closely with growth and resource management. And again, since we're talking about growth and, and we have a tremendous amount of growth in Volusia County, your team also focuses greatly on green building. What, what are those resources like? And, and that's really, again, we have to change our mindset of way we think about building.
Right. So there's some amazing resources out there. There's some, there are free resources available to folks. You know, Florida Green Building Coalition has a list of different things that you can do to green your home, that your, your existing home. But also like, you know, from, if you're starting to build a home, you can look on their site, and they have a list of practices that you can utilize to get certified as a green home. So within there, they're looking at water, and they're looking at energy, and, and, you know, kind of like the conversation we were having earlier on before the show, you know, there's this idea that if you're utilizing water, then you're probably somewhere along the line, there's energy being used.
Sure.
And vice versa. So, you know, the two together, if you start reducing your use of both of those, you're really thinking about saving money, you know, which is a big piece, you mentioned economics, that's a big piece for all of us, right? And then also in the construction practices. So the things that we do when we construct those homes, we're looking at the maintenance, so reducing maintenance from green building, and then also being more resilient. So the, the materials that you use and the way those homes are constructed are more resilient to some of the issues that we may have as, you know, as we move forward. So whether it's, you know, events from flooding or storm impacts. So there's great things. And then inside, we were talking about landscaping. So they look at inside and outside your home use. So in the landscaping itself, looking at ways we can use Florida-friendly landscaping practices, incorporate native, Florida native plants, so we're using less water and, you know, pesticides and fertilizer are not as impactful because they're not required longer term. And then looking at things like, you know, low-impact development. So before you even design and start building the site, looking at the practices that you're doing to keep stormwater on that site, so that low-impact, you know, development, so that stormwater is not running off and creating an issue for somebody else, so dealing with it on-site. So it might be just from something like a single building to a whole development, but, you know, looking at that in the design process and when you start looking at your site development.
What are your thoughts on rain barrels? I, I mean, that, is that considered green building or even?
So, so yeah, it's part of green infrastructure. When we're looking at rain barrels, and yes, and it's certainly something that is within green building practices too, you know, it's, it's using water on-site, harvesting that water, so you're not turning on the irrigation system. You know, so there's definitely benefits to that. And also, you know, from individual lots, you do something else, you can do like a rain garden.
Sure.
By planting natives on-site, look at an area where there's water collecting, where you can collect water. So there's other things that you can do to.
So you mentioned Florida native plants. How much water do we use to keep our grass green? I mean, you see irrigation throughout all communities.
Right.
How much water is going towards just making sure our grass is a pretty color?
Well, over 50% of the water that's used in Volusia County is put out on lawns, which is
That's just amazing to think that it's that much water.
Yeah.
To keep our, our grasses green.
Yeah. And it's kind of the mindset of, you know, the residents that we have come and live here. You know, most of them come, you talked about the Midwest earlier.
Yeah.
They come from places where the grass naturally grows well, and you have soils that are loamy type of soils.
Sure.
High in water retention and high in nutrient retention. Here we have sandy soils. It's still a soil, but it's very porous, and so it doesn't hold on to nutrients, and it doesn't hold on to water very well. So what do you got to do? You got to irrigate it if you want it to look like up north. If we could kind of change the mindset of people that my lawn in Florida doesn't need to look at my lawn in Illinois or Indiana or New York or Michigan, we'd be doing a whole lot better. And I think we're making a little bit of progress there, but certainly not enough.
And Kevin came up with this statistic. He said that Americans use five times as much water as a, as a European. Now, is that because, when I think of it, you know, European, they're more tightly, densely populated, they, they're living vertically as opposed to we have our big lawns and stuff like that.
When I heard that, I couldn't believe it. Five times.
Right, right. I, I think it's a cultural thing. And I think it's got a lot to do with urbanization.
Yeah.
But yeah, cultural thing, I mean, people like their lawns, you know, people like their play areas and stuff like that, which is, there's nothing wrong with it, but we can, we can certainly do it a better way.
But certainly, reading about a statistic like that, it, it teaches us a lot about ourselves, about our utilization. And again, going back to that mindset change and sustainability, this can't, this cannot sustain itself in the future.
Right. And behavioral changes, just like, you know, like you were saying, it's, it's, you know, how do we change our behavior? And, and it's really kind of like we're saying, stepping back and looking at what you're doing on a daily basis, and are there ways you can save water? What can you do in your daily activities to save water?
We're talking with Katrina Locke, she's the Sustainability and Resiliency Manager with Volusia County, and Tom Carey, who's the Pollution Control Manager, and many other hats, Tom. I, I sometimes I think it depends on the day what title you have.
Right.
But we'll continue talking about water and water conservation. Stay with us.
Get ready, it's time for another Volusia County Fire Rescue Fire Safety Tip.
Another good tip for the kitchen is safety for the children. You want to create a three-foot zone of safety around the stove top so that children can't access and get burned.
I'm Will Roberts, you're a Volusia County Tax Collector. Nobody enjoys standing in line. That's why the next time you have business at the Tax Collector's office, skip the line by paying online. Here's how you do it. If you need to renew a vehicle registration or pay property taxes, all you need is a computer or a smartphone. To pay online, you may use a debit or credit card or your checking account. To get to the secured site, log on to vctaxcollector.org/pay. That's vctaxcollector.org/pay. Choose either vehicle registration or property tax, then type in the information that's needed to complete the transaction. Before you log on, you do need to know that the website's third-party vendor charges a service fee. The Tax Collector does not receive any portion of this fee. So skip the line and pay online. For more information about services the Tax Collector provides, please log on to vctax collector.org. That's vctax collector.org.
And we're back. I'm Brian Vandal, along with Kevin Captain. You're listening to Volusia Today, a public information radio program brought to you by the County of Volusia. Thanks for listening this morning.
Thanks, Brian. So we're talking with Katrina Locke and Tom Carey with the Volusia County's Environmental Management Division. So we're talking a lot about growth management today and how it affects water. And along the lines of water conservation and sustainability, there's programs and resources that are out there and available for individuals, for families, for, you know, commercial entities. Some of the ones that I've seen on volusia.org, mentioned Florida Water Star, the EPA's Water Sense Program. Can, can you guys talk about some of those programs and how they benefit with what we're talking about with water quality preservation and conservation?
Yeah. So they're both programs that are designed to obviously save water, just as you said, so to be more conserving on, on the resources that we use. From a Water Sense perspective, these are a number of different products that are labeled with Water Sense, so the EPA's Water Sense. So when you're buying a product at the store, you're, say you're changing out your shower or, or your faucet, you know, you can look for a labeling on the box that talks about Water Sense and will identify as a product that's, that is, you know, more conserving when it comes to using water.
All the more reason to look at labels.
Right.
Yes.
And a lot of these things are, are required by Florida statute, the building code statute now. And a big driver of the Water Star is the Water Management District. They have a program where, you know, they give actually points for installing, you know, low drip faucet or low-flow faucets and certain shut-off valves and things of that nature. So it's a pretty comprehensive program.
And once, once you take ownership of that house that's followed all those rules, there's no inspector coming to make sure that you follow the rules necessarily. It really comes down to personal responsibility, and you guys have a lot of educational opportunities or outlets that you can, from, you go to your website, it's like from, from kids to adults, there's something for everyone to, to go on to and to learn quite a bit about.
Yeah. There's lots of information on the website, on the Green Volusia website, on, on things that you can do to reduce your impact. And that's basically what we're looking at, is how can I do something, like you said, personal responsibility, how can I do something different? But it's also, we also talk about what we're doing as well, right? So we, you know, we don't want to just send them, say, what you should do.
You should.
We're, we're sharing with you what we, the county, have been doing in some of these program areas too.
Interesting stuff. So we talked also about sea level rise coming up, and that's also a part of resiliency, and how that affects water as well, too. What's the county doing for that? Because we know that it, it's coming our way and it, it affects the groundwater.
So from a resiliency perspective, we've been working on that since 2016, looking at plans, you know, looking at sea level rise projections. We actually just completed a plan in 2017 with updated projection, 2019, I apologize, that had sea level rise projections in it that were taken to county council. And those are for planning purposes. So there's three projections, you know, depending on what you're building and how long it has a lifespan for, depends on which of those three curves you should really look at. And we've gone out in three timeframes as well, 2040, 2017, 2100. So we're looking at what's happening in the county based on these projections over time. And then from that plan, which gives us also goals and objectives that we need to follow and to make us more resilient.
Sure.
Came the Regional Resilience Collaborative, which is eight-county regional collaborative, up to 78 cities could be in that, within that collaborative too, of ways we can pull resources and really work together to address some of the issues. So like you said, sea level rise, but also, you know, do the other impacts of climate change too, like heat stress and, you know, and flooding.
And all that goes back into, again, the sustainability parts. I know when we're talking about those five Rs, there's other areas that your team focuses on, you know, for us being green, we always hear of being green, but there's other things like energy and travel, water, waste, health. I mean, all those things are things that are all and travel, water, waste, health. I mean, all those things are things that are all compiled into your program for resiliency and sustainability.
Yeah, we do a lot of educational outreach on, like we've talked about, you know, ways that we can make an impact. So we just finished our Climate Smart Floridians class, which actually covered all the things that you just mentioned. We're advertising for another one that's going to happen in September. So again, that information will be on the Green Volusia site. But basically covering, you know, what emissions come from those things that we do, from everyday transportation, and then giving people ideas of things that they can do, like carpool and ride sharing, really thinking about the trips you make, and, you know, do I really need to go out to the store for that one item, or can it wait till tomorrow when I'm doing that trip? And, you know, I'll just do, maybe just do a little detour around to get there. But it's a lot, lot of saving of gas, lot of saving of the emissions, but also, you know, cost right now, right? So big, big, big thing right now to save money. And so really something to think about. Yeah, so we do education around the transportation piece, the food, and food waste, because again, linking it back to water and energy, you know, and the production, and the growing, and the, you know, production of specific food items, and then, you know, the waste piece of it, right? There's all, all of that going on, there's all energy and water being wasted in those processes if we're throwing food out. And so then we talk about composting as well, and a way to, to deal with that, if you do have some waste, or even if you're cutting up vegetables, you know, you're going to have something, right? So great way to put it in the compost bin, recycle it, get it to make some really good compost, and then grow some vegetables in your yard. So we talk about things like that, too. But then, you know, there is so many programs, like I said earlier, going on at a lot of our centers, and then also through the Green Volusia program on, on loads of different areas.
And one event that's coming up, Tom, is the St. John's River Cleanup. What is this? Twenty-six?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
Day after your Earth Day.
Twenty-six annual on the twenty-third. There we go.
Yeah, so we'll be doing that from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM that day. And if folks want to participate, they can go to volusia.org/cleanup, and they can register for one of our nine sites. We've got 156 miles of river to clean up, so we kind of divide it up along nine sites, and hopefully we'll have a good turnout.
And you kind of look for, you like people on the shoreline, but you also like boaters, kayakers to kind of do the waterways.
The St. John is not very urbanized, so yeah, it's easier to, yeah, thankfully, you're right. So yeah, we do like kayakers, canoes, boaters to come out, but we take walkers too. So yeah, anybody's welcome. We have scout groups, church groups, individuals, you know, just come out and clean up the river, and we usually find some very interesting items, and it's always a good time, so.
Well, you mentioned Earth Day, too. That's April 22nd. And speaking of, you know, going green, the Volusia County Council recently approved Earth Day as a free bus ride day for, for all, any county resident, anybody in Volusia County, you can hop on Boat Trans, and it's going to be free on April the 22nd, Earth Day. So I think I might be coming to work on the bus that day.
All right.
So we're talking again with Katrina Locke and Tom Carey. We'll take our last break and come back and wrap up Volusia Today. Stay with us.
Do you enjoy helping animals in need? Then why not join our caring and professional team right here at Volusia County Animal Services? We have immediate openings for several high-energy candidates interested in becoming a part of our animal care clinic family. As a vet assistant, you'll be doing everything from prepping patients for surgery, as well as assisting in surgery, even recovering those patients. Also prepping log records and helping with our field services and our casework. Vet assistants also help out during our special events, where it's extremely popular to the public. Things like pet microchipping and vaccine events, as well as food drives. All of those things are incredibly rewarding, and you'll have the satisfaction of knowing that you're helping pets right here in your community. To get more information, please visit volusia.org, or call 386-248-1790. You'll be glad you did.
Airborne!
Hey, why don't we go to the Marine Science Centers?
Yeah!
Are you looking for a new adventure? Come on down to the Marine Science Center in Ponce Inlet. Watch as our staff cares for sick and injured sea turtles. You can also explore our marine exhibits, touch some stingrays, visit our gift shop, and stroll through the seabird sanctuary. Afterward, you can visit the Ponce Inlet Lighthouse. The Marine Science Center is open every day but Monday.
And welcome back to Volusia Today. We are talking today with Katrina Locke and Tom Carey, both with environmental management with Volusia County. Quickly, Tom, you know, people are moving into the cities, but people are still living in unincorporated areas. A lot of people are on septic tanks still.
Sure, yeah. Well, you know, septic tanks have been around for a long time. And the intent of a septic tank is to destroy pathogens, and it's actually a health issue. They were never designed to remove nutrients. So we've got over 90,000 septic tanks in Volusia County.
Ninety thousand?
Ninety thousand. We're like the capital of septic tanks in Florida. We're just not a really great badge to be wearing, but we're working on it. So they produce nitrogen pollution, which poos our groundwater, and more importantly, our springs, which are being affected now. But, you know, we're trying to do some things about that. We are about to receive a $1.1 million grant from the Department of Environmental Protection to improve upgrades to septic tanks in the DeLeon Springs primary focus area. So that's $7,000 per upgrade, and, you know, if you do it right, you can pretty much pay for the upgrade. And what the, yeah, what the upgrades do is they reduce the amount of nitrogen that, you know, goes into the groundwater and eventually into the spring. So that's a good thing.
So it's definitely a more advanced type of septic system that really helps to denature that nitrogen.
That's exactly right, yeah. Nitrifies it, which makes it go, I mean, 78% of our air that we're breathing right now is nitrogen. So it's a form of nitrogen that's in the ground, but it's got to be denitrified, and the bugs got to work on it and all that. So these systems make its own. There's three different types of systems you can get, so there's some, you know, variability there as well.
It's great to, to see and hear that, you know, your division's going out there to get grants and, and be able to improve our water quality. Well, with that, we'll wrap up Volusia Today. Thank you for listening. Take care, stay safe, and help your neighbors.
If you have a comment about Volusia Today, or if there is a topic you would like to hear featured, please contact Volusia County Community Information at 1-866-345-0345.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect it, who will?
Litter is a problem, one that we can solve.
But it's going to take all of us working together.
What matters is that we all do our part.
Don't be a litter bug.
And pick up litter whenever you see it.
Every litter bit counts.
Keep Volusia Beautiful.
Hello, I'm Kristy from Volusia County Environmental, and we are out here at Deep Creek Reserve to share the Adopt a Trail program. You help maintain the trail, you help keep it to look beautiful. Couple ways you can do that. One is you can bring out loppers and trimmers, and anything that overhangs the trail that sticks out far, you can trim back, so you leave a nice wide trail for other people to pass through. Other things you can do is if there's any trash along the trail, you want to be sure to pick that up, take a trash bag as you go along, and collect any trash. That way you leave the trail absolutely beautiful. And there's one other thing you can do also, is be on the lookout for non-native invasive species. These are plants that take over, and they choke out the native plants that are supposed to be here. And if you see them, you can remove them yourself, or let us know about it, and then you can come and remove them. It's a great program where you get to help clean up in one of the over 40 miles of trails that we have here in Volusia County. So we need lots of help. Come on out, enjoy the beautiful lands, and help keep it beautiful for others, too.
Do you enjoy helping animals in need? Then why not join our caring and professional team right here at Volusia County Animal Services? We have immediate openings for several high-energy candidates interested in becoming a part of our animal care clinic family. As a vet assistant, you'll be doing everything from prepping patients for surgery, as well as assisting in surgery, even recovering those patients. Also prepping log records and helping with our field services and our casework. Vet assistants also help out during our special events, where it's extremely popular to the public. Things like pet microchipping and vaccine events, as well as food drives. All of those things are incredibly rewarding, and you'll have the satisfaction of knowing that you're helping pets right here in your community. To get more information, please visit volusia.org, or call 386-248-1790. You'll be glad you did.
Volusia County is a beautiful place to live, but if we don't respect our own home, how can we expect other people to? We have a litter problem in Volusia County. We're literally trashing our own environment. But it's a problem that we can solve if we all work together. Today, I'd like to talk to you about one aspect of keeping our environment clean, and that's stormwater drains. Maybe something that you don't think about all the time. Everything comes down this street and goes into these drains. Fertilizer runoff, lawn pesticides, even household chemicals as people wash their cars. All of that washes down here into the drains. We need to be more careful what goes into our stormwater drains. And then it goes into this beautiful lake out here. It's organic, but it still is a problem in our lakes, rivers, and streams. It adds excess nutrients that causes algae blooms. That's why Volusia County has a Stormwater Drain Marketing Event. You can go to volusia.org and learn ways to help keep these clean, but we have to work together. What matters is that we all do our part. Don't be a litter bug, and pick up litter when you see it. Every litter bit counts. Keep Volusia Beautiful.
Volusia County is our home. If we don't respect it, who will? Litter is a problem, one that we can solve, but it's going to take all of us working together. Something as simple as discarded fishing line causes many tragic entanglements of wildlife that often suffer from starvation, loss of limbs, and even eventual death from infections or ingestion of the line. It is a serious litter problem, especially around boat ramps and fishing areas. Did you know that monopole element recovery stations are placed over 100 locations across the county? Please use them. And if you really want to make an impact, we're looking for individuals and groups who feel a connection to the environment to adopt a container and monitor it on a regular basis. I do believe over time that people respect our environment more and more, and I believe that our litter problem has become less, but here we have a major issue. Discarded cigarette butts on our beaches and in our parks. When I see someone picking up litter, whether it's in the adopt-a-road, adopt-a-highway, or adopt-a-park, or just working on their own, it shows me a citizen who has pride in his community. Your contribution can be big or small. What matters is that we all do our part. Don't be a litter bug, and pick up litter when you see it. Every litter bit counts. Keep Volusia Beautiful.
If everybody would find a seat, we'll get started at 2:06. If everybody would find a seat, we'll get started at 2:06. Right. Okay, we will call the meeting back to order at 2:06 or 7:00. Depending on which clock each... Can we make those clocks sync with each other? There they go. All right. See, things just happen around here. All right, before I ask for a public comment, we have two letters we dealt with today, and I just want to make sure that we're... One was the letter for the Museum of Arts and Sciences for a grant. Every council member wants to be... Wants to sign on with that. If you do, they will... Did you get a copy to read? Then staff will send a copy appropriate for all of us to sign.
And I had received the request from them April the 5th, and I had sent out a letter at that time, so...
Okay.
I also did one for the Museum of Arts Deland. So if we're doing one, I would ask for support for the other.
Gladly.
Thank you.
You can make a motion to that.
And then the other letter was to the governor. Everybody... I know everybody wants to sign that, so staff will take care of that. County manager? Both those letters?
Second. Museum of Arts, Deland, and Science.
Gertman made the motion?
Yes.
And Billy made the second to accept both of these letters, one to the Museum of Arts and Science and requests, just supporting them in their request for a grant, and the other to the governor.
And one to the Museum of Arts Deland, correct?
And one to the... So three letters.
Three letters.
Museum of Arts Deland. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Heather, are you here?
I am. Thank you.
So it's... That was seven to zero?
Yes.
All right. Public participation. We have one, John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. Couple of things. One, during the meeting, you had mentioned about some county land in the middle of the cities. Billy, you're well aware of it, there's about two dozen properties between Port Orange, Daytona Beach shores, and Daytona Beach that are either in one or the other. So you end up with like hagstoos. You have two houses that are in the city of Daytona Beach, one in the shores, two in the county, one in Port Orange, one in the shores. It looks like a mess. I was wondering whether... Because we have like four locations. We have the same thing with Holly Hill. We have the same thing with Port Orange on our south side. So I was wondering if the county ever thought of kind of putting forth an effort to take all of these odd pieces of properties and putting them into the cities, and then the cities would take care of it, and then it'd be... Our responsibilities would be in the larger areas in the county per se, rather than these bits and pieces of properties all over God knows where. Secondly, what's happening with the county building on Beach Street? We talked seven and a half million from the insurance. Wasn't there like $13 million from FEMA? Isn't that out there in the breezeway somewhere? And because FEMA said that if we build back on the property, they'll give us the money if we don't build on the property. Because the city of Daytona Beach, as you recall, wants to build a city hall close by, but if you're not going to do anything, they're going to build elsewhere or double the size of our building where it's located. But I would rather have the city move into that location. It's called synergy. So if you build and courthouse comes over there, then... And we have a huge Brown and Brown building right down the street, and then we have the apartments going down. It just creates so much synergy. I would like you all to consider that at some point, sooner than later. Ocean Center. We always refer to the Hilton as the Ocean Center Hotel. It's not. The planners and whatnot do not consider the Ocean Center having a hotel nearby because you have to cross the street. There is a breezeway that sits up in the middle of nowhere. I went through a tour of the artwork in the Ocean Center, and they were talking about this bridge to nowhere. Is there a possibility... Because I know the Hilton is planning on that bridge hitting their building. Can we push that forward? It'll be... Can't be too much. I mean relatively too much, $100,000, $200,000, or whatever, but it would... Trust me, that's not a lot. If we can get the business from them, it pays for itself in two years. So again, if we could look into that, because it would then raise it amongst the other convention hotels up a notch. And we need everything we can to compete with the rest of the Ocean Centers. And if we can get rid of that drainage ditch in the front... I'm sorry. Don't put a drainage ditch on A1A. I would like a great plaza, because the city of Daytona Beach needs a plaza. Plus, when you all are advertising, you advertise your whatnot in the back in the parking lot, and people walking on A1A can't see through the building, so they don't stop by. And if it was on A1A, they would literally just walk off A1A into that plaza. That would be a great idea. And I think you all need to define tax... You always hear development doesn't pay for itself. I think it does, because I see it in front of my house. The ocean walk is in front of my house. It gives us $2 to $3 million a year in taxes. An identical property on the other end of Ocean Avenue gives us $37,000 a year in taxes. So in the last 20 years, that's over $60 million more in one property than the next. So if we could define it, what it really is, I think it would help for everybody. Thank you.
Mr. County Manager?
Yeah, did you want me to...
Not...
Just to me and John? Okay.
Yeah, just for your comments. End of the meeting.
Yeah, I have nothing at this time. We're good.
County Attorney?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Now the pressure's on. Billy Wheeler?
I have nothing. I just will say, just give it an alert just in case that there is the orange... What's it called? Crush. Orange crush. That's a possibility that will be coming to Daytona. So just kind of keep your eyes open. We're getting some assurance that maybe they're not coming, but everybody's going to be prepared. And it'll be mainly from International Speedway to University, I think it is. So may not be a good time to go into that area this weekend, so...
So this is another pop-up event? There's no permits pulled anywhere?
There's no permits, but we are prepared. We've... Our folks have had meetings and preparation with Daytona Beach PD and the sheriff's office.
Just wanted the citizens to know so they could maybe avoid the area.
Barbara Gertman?
Nothing today.
Y'all are going to do this to me?
Yeah. Oh, wait a minute. Nothing right now. Let me let Danny speak first and see if I...
First comes Ben Johnson.
Yeah, this is kind of a touchy subject, but apparently there are certain laws that are in place that we... That I think we need to remind each other of in here. And one is firearms are not allowed in council, except by current law enforcement officers. I disagree with this law very much because as an honorably retired law enforcement officer, 43 years, and also concealed weapons permit holder, I would prefer to be able to, but the law says it in chambers that we cannot. And we had an unfortunate incident where it appears as though somebody was bringing a gun to chambers, and that's a violation of law. And just a reminder, let's don't do that. If you do have a concealed weapons permit, don't do it because you could end up on the wrong side of the law and lose your ability to carry a firearm. But it's something needs to be brought forward.
Thank you. Dr. Lowry?
I'm good.
Heather Post?
Yes, so just want to respond to the firearm thing. I have to say, I don't need to be schooled by Ben on what he does not know to be actual truth. So I'm very aware of the law, and there are no firearms being brought into chambers. So thank you very much for the reciting the law. Speaking of that, my... But I will say, not really your place to be talking about that kind of stuff either. Don't appreciate it. You accusing me of violating the law when you don't know what you're talking about. So on that issue regarding my fall, it's been about two weeks, and I just want to thank everyone, certainly everyone on council that cared enough to reach out. That would mean Jeff and Barb. And greatly appreciate your concern. Certainly working on recuperating and getting vertical as fast as possible, for sure. Just have a couple things. Two days before our last council meeting, I was fortunate enough on the Sunday, luckily it happened before the fall, to have what is... Has become my annual spring women's get-together at the house to do a fundraiser for... Usually I go back and forth between Pace Center or Holly Hill School Band, but was fortunate enough to get a bunch of community-minded women together, and we were able to raise a little over $2,000 for Holly Hill School Band on the weekend. So I just wanted to say thank you very much to everyone involved in that and anyone who continues to send funds. And I'm very, very much looking forward to actually showing up in person at Holly Hill School Band and providing them with those funds. So unfortunately, I had to postpone that a little bit, but looking forward to getting that to them because I know it's desperately needed. The other thing I had was... I had a question about George, the emergency management director. We got an email about a week ago saying that the... We have the emergency management director that Jim Judge is now assigned, and... But I'm still seeing it advertised on the county jobs, so I'm curious about that. It looks like it was... It says it was posted a week ago, which is when Jim Judge was assigned to that position. So do you have any comments on that, or what's happening there?
I'm checking right now about the posting, but Jim is definitely right now the official emergency manager. I didn't know that the posting had gone out, but if it has, because we will be looking right now, Jim Judge is our guy, and I would anticipate, given the time we're at, he will be our guy through the season.
Okay, so are we still... We're still looking for someone then? That's not real clear what you just said. I just don't want to waste anyone's time if they're putting in.
Are you talking about our emergency manager position?
Yes.
Yeah. We are looking.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. So just to clarify that for the public then. And the last thing I had was, unfortunately, I missed the workshop last week on the growth management. I was able to watch it online, but I would really welcome the opportunity to have more discussion with council on that. Does it appear there was a lot of actual discussion, other than staff? So I'd love to see if council's in agreement with maybe getting together and chatting Or us just actually discussing it, us in of ourselves having a workshop on it, or allotting some time, even if it's at the dais, just to discuss the future of Volusia, where we're actually headed and what our priorities are specifically. I don't know. Does anyone have any comment on that?
Yeah, we had agreed at the workshop that we would carry it forward and have specific discussions on specific items, including low-impact development. And I asked Clay if he could do that at this meeting, and he asked for another two weeks or... And there was several other topics that we gave to staff that they are coming back on for further discussion with council. There was so, as you know from watching it, there was so much information, and there's so many important topics.
Right.
So that was kind of an overview, and we have to chop it apart and start eating the elephant one bite at a time.
Sure. So again, you know, I'm just looking for some movement on it then, or some definition as to... We all know how quickly time goes by and that we only have council meetings every two weeks, so... Or two a month. So sometimes saying, you know, we'll do stuff in the future ends up being next year, eight months from now, or et cetera. And if we have several points to discuss, I'd really like to see if we can figure out a game plan and sort of lay it out instead of kicking the can down the road.
Good. I think everybody agrees, and we can... I'll get with Clay and staff and see if we can come up with a... The anticipated schedule of when we're going to talk about each item.
Okay, perfect.
And yeah, it's important to me that we don't just let it go either. Staff just asked for more time for some of the specifics that we asked for.
For sure. Totally understand, you know, and certainly it's reasonable to understand that staff needs time on various things, but just would love to see sort of a game plan as to what we're expecting, what we're doing, because I know, not just for us, but certainly the public is expecting that, so... Or looking for that. So I'd love to be able to provide them with that as well, sooner than later, of course. All right, and that's all I had. Thank you so much, and hope everybody had a good Easter as well. Thank you.
Danny Robbins?
Thanks, Jay. I just wanted to bring up a few people at the speed and council up the speed. Received a complaint about this golf course down there off of Glen Cove Road over the weekend, and I just wanted to add in the fact that we're jumping on, just in case anybody gets some emails. We received a couple complaints within the last two years, and staff has done a tremendous job servicing those complaints and modifying it. Had about six meetings with the neighborhood, but we're just trying to really drill it down now and put some of this stuff to bed or find a compromise, long-term compromise. Also too, I requested some information. You guys may see it coming out over your email. I know there was some discussion a few months ago about UTV usage, and we kind of determined that it was done by the state. I requested some information on our ordinance, reference golf carts, low-speed roads, you know, under 35 miles an hour. Newsminder Beach has an ordinance like that, so if you see that, you'll know where it's coming from. I just had a couple people ask about it, and it may look like a good kind of middle-of-the-road compromise if council decides to go that way. Also too, just based... Jeff, you brought up a good point today. I don't know if the public knows, or if there's anything we can do here with directing staff. Can we put together a list for local businesses in terms of... I know there was PPP loans. The ACA had incentives for businesses that had under 50 employees. There's local tax credits, state, federal, you know. Is there a list that we can put together and make viewable for our businesses, or do we have something like that already that we can...
I mean, for all of the grants that were available and/or are available?
Correct. Or incentives for the smaller... Because people don't realize that smaller businesses or small businesses, George, what is it, 500 and under employees is...
Yeah, small business is actually larger than most people think. So it's like four or 500.
But there is... And the biggest thing that I see in southeast Volusia is just getting help itself. So if there's anything that we know of or grant... help itself, so if there's anything that we know of, or grants that's available, or any services that we offer, if we can put it together on a list where we can put it out on social media or individually, that'd be cool, that'd be fine.
Yeah, and, and I'll make sure that council has a link, but I, our economic development webpage, and they've created a website for Volusia Business Resources, you might recall that Helga referenced that group this morning, and that's exactly the kind of material that they have out there, all resources for small businesses, from grants and tax credits to assistance with staffing, so I'll make sure that council gets that, and make sure that it's kept up to date and is fully available, all the resources we can possibly refer folks to.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, just a couple of quick things, one, we just already tackled the, the results of the growth management workshop, it's, there was several items. Do you have a question for, before I start?
No, remember, remember I told you that after Danny spoke, that I would have something?
Okay, well...
You remember that? It was, it's real easy though, and it's just in response to where he was talking about a list for the businesses. Community services help provide a listing for me, that when I'm out in the community, I actually go over and let them know like what community services are available for emergency help, so it would be helpful to have something like that in relation to small business, that we can do the same, because we send everybody to, it's on our website, but many times, if you just plant the seed in the community when you're out speaking, for whatever reason, it just resonates in a different way, so, thank you, Chair.
You're welcome, thank you, Barbara. What, what, where was I?
Growth management, you had already...
And Lynn.
...that part.
Yeah, so, just to, just to reassure everybody and, and the public that might listen to this, it was a, it was a serious discussion, a serious day, and it's a, it's an issue that I know that the, um, the public is really interested in, and they don't want us to kick it down the road, they want us to, they, they want to know what we're doing to preserve beautiful Volusia County for the future, and so, so I'm not going to let it fall, the, the one that, fall through the cracks, the one that I'm really interested in, because in talking to the development community, they're actu- they are open and asking about low impact development, because they have no idea what the standards will, will be, and what might be expected of them, so that's going to be a big one to tackle. Along those lines, last week, I was able to attend the Florida Wildlife Corridor Summit in Orlando, that's what this pin is, it says "Live Wildly," and I wanted to make sure, in case anybody from the press picked that pin up in the, in the video here, that it was, I'm, I'm not harkening back to the seventies, with "Live Wildly," it had to do with the value of the wildlife corridor, and they did a tremendous job at the summit, there was people there from the governor's office, from DEP, from FWC, from Florida Department of Transportation, some really high-quality presenters, including county staff here, but what, what was so interesting to me was how much of a cohesive approach there was to solving this problem, and Volusia County was in the, right in the, in the middle, in the crosshairs, because our county is like the bridge between South Florida and all the way up to Georgia for a wildlife corridor, not just to preserve beautiful green spaces and water, although it was related to water quite a bit, but for the, for the wildlife that lives there, to have a safe passage, you know, we all see bears, deers, and everything else dead on the side of the road, and, you know, we want to avoid that, we want to preserve what makes Florida so special. And um, Billy, I'm going to call Brad, before I do, Brad, if you wanted to make a comment first? Okay, I, I asked Brad Burwell to, he, he attended, and I just wanted his thoughts on it as well, and before you start, one of the big things to me, that I don't know if, how much the public considers this aspect of it, but it kept, in, in the track that I took on, on funding, they did a tremendous job of showing what, what an advantage it is to Florida, to county, and to the cities involved, for economic development, that it can bring in a lot of money, it's a valuable resource, it's just not land to sit fallow, it's, it's a very valuable resource, so, Brad, anything you would like to say, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you for the opportunity, so I think what's, what was salient about the conference is that, you know, that this is, the Wildlife Corridor Act was passed by, you know, every member of the, the House and Senate in Florida, and I think that speaks to the unifying power of the Wildlife Corridor, and just seeing the, the amount of people there from different backgrounds, you had, you know, the advocacy and activist groups there, as well as scientists and conservationists and practitioners, policymakers and filmmakers and social media people, so they're all focused on preserving the Wildlife Corridor, and as you said, one of the, I think, most important things for me is they, the Florida Wildlife Corridor Foundation hired Mackenzie and Company to do a study on the value of the, of the corridor, and look at the economic benefit that it provides to the state, and we, even though we've only got fifty-five, fifty-four percent preserved in Florida, that generates six billion dollars in economic activity for our state, and so, they're making the economic case for it, so I think that was important to understand. I was proud, I must say, that we were the only county with a delegation, if you might say, of the groups that I described, that we had some of our environmental groups there, as well as policymakers and staff, our, our land acquisition manager was on a panel, did an excellent job giving the funders in the room to understand that Volusia County's a player, and land acquisition and preserving the Wildlife Corridor, so I think it was a great opportunity. And I think what's unique about our approach is, you know, we have the Volusia Conservation Corridor that runs through the center of our county, some call it the Wild Heart of Volusia County, or the Palmetto Curtain, whichever you prefer, but I think that it's important to realize that with the purchases that you agreed to with the Water Management District at the last meeting, we've preserved over forty thousand acres of that fifty-two thousand acre corridor, so we're on the right track, but I think in engaging with these folks, you have a team and policymakers who are engaged in the process, engaged in accessing that money, and we appreciate the opportunity to be involved.
We did, thank you very much, Brad, it was actually an honor, because like you said, just kind of like at the, at the Water Summit that we went to, Billy, we were, our county probably had the best representation there with, with staff and, and policymakers, so, and all eyes were literally on us because of our central location to that, and it was just, it was very, very beneficial, and Volusia Forever, you know, they're working with, through the, the Corridor Act, there's just, so we need in Volusia County willing sellers, and I know you have sent out letters, Brad, and we'll, we'll keep doing what we can there, but we need willing sellers for this important land, and it's important, certainly to the wildlife, but to all of us that live here, and to water, that kept being brought home, that how, how many, how many wetlands and important water bodies were included here, so, Billy?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a correction. Ms. Post, Mr. Johnson, did, I never heard your name mentioned at all, I don't think anybody else did, so I didn't know that it was directed to you until you mentioned it, but your name definitely was not mentioned in that conversation, so I just wanted to make that as a clarification.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out, I think everybody's very clear on what happened. Thank you, I, thank you.
All right, I think that wraps it up for everybody, so we will, you say no?
I said no.
Oh.
Sound of...
Yeah, so staff, thank you again for your input today, Cyrus, keep up the good work, and everyone here, so we will adjourn the meeting at 2:37.